Good morning, everybody. It is now nine o'clock, so while I will call the committee, the whole meeting to order. And I'll just ask our clerk Mallory if she could do roll call for us.
Hey, Councilor Clark.
I'm present.
Councilor Donaldson.
Present.
Deputy Mayor Kennedy.
Present.
Councilor McKechnie.
Present.
Councilor Smith.
Uh, present.
Councilor Wood Roberts.
Present.
And Mayor Roberts.
Present.
Perfect. Thank you.
Hey, thank you. Everybody's here. So the first item I have is to adopt our agenda for today. So I'll look for mover and a seconder. Uh, Councilor Clark and Councilor McKechnie. You resolved that the agenda for the committee, the whole meeting held on May tenth, twenty twenty-two be approved as presented. All in favor? Okay, carried. Next, I'll ask if there's any disclosure of pecuniary interest or general nature thereof.
Uh, sorry, uh, Madam Mayor, not a pecuniary interest, uh, but with respect to the agenda.
Okay.
Uh, you had asked me at the last council meeting to raise the topic of, uh, West Guilford Recreation Centre and Canada Day. Uh, at the meeting, uh, today. So just let me know when you want to talk about that.
Okay, and so, um, to through the clerk, do we need to put as amended and we'll add that as an item to make sure that we?
Yeah, uh, or Tamara's, Tamara's wants to speak. It looks like I'll let her speak first.
Okay.
I was just gonna say, could it fit under the recreation programs update as it's a local event?
We could do it that way, and I could add it to the minutes, so we could discuss it through there.
Okay, or do we add, or do we add it as an item D? Item, do we add an item D and say West Guilford, it is a separate, and it hasn't been written in there? I'm fine with that. To say item D under Parks and Rec, West Guilford, Canada Day. So, so, uh, I'm gonna look to the mover and the seconder to see if we can adopt the agenda as amended. So, Councilor Clark and Councilor McKechnie. You fine with that? Okay, so it'll be, um, what's the number five, uh, five D? Okay, so thank you for the reminder there. Um, next, we just have to adopt our minutes from the last committee, the whole meeting, which was April twelfth, twenty twenty-two. So a mover and a seconder for that. Councilor Smith and second by Deputy Mayor Kennedy. You resolved that the April twelfth, twenty twenty-two committee, the whole minutes be approved as circulated. All in favor? That carries. And first item up today is we have a delegation. Um, so we'll just wait to bring our delegate in, and we're also gonna bring our staff, Director Public Works, Rob Camelon. So Andy. Well, I always say your name wrong, Andy Velikis.
Velikis, yeah.
Velikis, I got the syllable on the wrong emphasis. Pardon me. Okay, so welcome, Andy, and we do have your, um, uh, report included in our agenda, but I'm going to turn the floor over to you to go through that with us.
Okay, quickly, since you've already got the report, I'll just sort of, well, quickly summarize and add a few little points, uh. Um, so I'm, I'm representing, uh, myself, uh, at this, uh, as a present presenter, but also representing our neighbors, or my neighbors, uh, Brian and Diane Kelly, who are also, you know, right next door and experiencing the same flooding that, uh, my properties, uh, um, experiencing. Anyway, what's the issue? Uh, early this spring, uh, my property on Halliburton Lake Road, along with my neighbor, uh, we got, we experienced some significant flooding. When, uh, culvert running, uh, through my property down towards the lake, uh, became blocked. It turned out to be frozen, but at the time, we didn't know it was frozen. Uh, and that the water from the municipal culvert that basically, uh, discharges at the top of my property, uh, overflowed onto my property and then over to my neighbor's property. Uh, so let's just do a little background for, so council can visualize what's happening here. Um, the municipality has an eighteen-inch inside diameter municipal culvert that, uh, starts at the far side of Halliburton Lake Road, uh, away from the lake, let's call it the forest side. And it picks up, uh, water from the municipal ditches on, uh, uh, that drain the roadway and, uh, some water from the, uh, adjacent woodland property on the other side. Um, the culvert then crosses the road, and it then terminates at the top end of my property. So it's basically discharging there. And there's a small ditch that runs maybe ten feet onto my property. And then I have a culvert that, uh, a twelve-inch culvert that's, uh, galvanized steel. Uh, and that runs around two hundred feet down towards the lake and discharging to the lake. Uh, the municipal culvert was replaced, uh, in twenty-eleven, twenty-twelve. It was right around the time when we bought the property. I remember them doing the work. And, uh, I was surprised that they actually put in an eighteen-inch culvert. Uh, when the culvert that is downstream, under my property, is only twelve inches. So, um, uh, that was, uh, I, I recognize that as a problem right back then. Um, the culvert on my property is, uh, ancient. It's probably around fifty years old. Uh, it's in very poor condition. Uh, this previous summer, I noticed that there was sand coming out of the discharged end of the, uh, of the culvert on my property. Um, sand coming out of a culvert means that the bottom of the culvert has rusted out and that the water flow coming through the culvert is picking up the bedding material and, uh, discharging it as, uh, uh, sand. So basically, this culvert, uh, is on its last legs. Um, so back in, um, March and April of, uh, twenty thirteen, uh, we experienced, uh, hundred-year rainfall event. And, uh, there were significant flooding and damage on both our properties. Uh, as the culvert on my property, uh, couldn't handle the flow coming out of the eighteen-inch culvert. Um, uh, just for council's, uh, information, um, an eighteen-inch culvert, even though it's only fifty percent bigger in, in diameter, it's roughly almost two and a half times the size, uh, in capacity, uh, that a twelve-inch culvert has. So, um, uh, that was, uh, uh, one of the main reasons that our property got flooded. It was that, uh, the eighteen-inch culvert was, uh, able to transmit a lot more water than a twelve-inch culvert could handle. Um, I got a call, um, from my neighbor on the Friday, uh, which is the day of the event. And she was basically saying she was standing on my driveway, and there was about six inches of water sheet flow, just running over top of my, uh, uh, my driveway, and I'd better get up there and, uh, because there's gonna be some serious damage. So my driveway washed out to about eighteen inches. Um, it was like a mini Grand Canyon there. Uh, we had several tons of gravel, granular material deposited on my, uh, neighbor's property. Uh, their whole front lawn was just covered, uh, with about six inches of, uh, granular material. And we had quite a bit in, uh, granular material out into the lake. Uh, it was amazingly lucky that, uh, none of this floodwater actually got into my neighbor's house because it basically surrounded, it basically was flowing right around, uh, uh, their, their property, their, their cottage or house, actually, because they live there full-time. Um, amazingly, within a week of the flood, the municipal crews came in and fixed my driveway, even though I didn't even ask for, uh, a repair or even notified them of a problem. So, um, um, thank you very much for doing that. But, uh, anyway, it sort of gave me a false sense of security, thinking that, oh, you know, municipality knows that there's a problem here and, uh, it'll be addressed. Uh, okay, so this year's flood event, um, in March of this year, I noticed a significant amount of water, uh, sort of flowing out from underneath my garage slab. So slab-on-grade construction. Uh, there was, uh, so then I said, well, where's this water coming from? I went down to look at the discharge end of the culvert on my property, and, uh, there was nothing coming out. It was just dripping. Um, so I went up to the, uh, far side of the road to see if there is water coming into the municipal culvert, and it was just flowing in there. It, I, I would, it was quite a bit of water going in. Um, so I said, well, where's this water going? And, uh, because there was so much snow, it was difficult to find, uh, where it was flowing. But, uh, eventually found that it was, uh, running out to a low spot on my property, where amazingly, all this water was percolating right into the ground. There must be a gravel seam of some sort in there because it was, all the flow was going there. It's about forty gallons a minute going in, uh, and then basically just disappearing into the ground. Well, it wasn't really disappearing. It was flowing underground and then oozing out in various spots in both my neighbor, uh, my, my property and my neighbor's property. Uh, my, uh, and that's where, where the, uh, water from underneath my garage was coming from. Um, the neighbor, uh, was experiencing six, eight inches of solid ice all over the, or around their, uh, their house. They actually had to park, uh, further, uh, uh, up the driveway, so they, uh, could actually, uh, get the cars out.
So Andy, I'm just, I'm not cutting you off. We do have lots of that included in our package. And I'm just, uh, just a reminder of your time allotment for, um,
All right, sorry. Okay, so I was concerned about my house. I was also concerned about my well because all this water, uh, getting in. I had a non-Goody well, so I was worried about that. I called the municipality. They came out. Uh, I was, thank you very much, uh, Rob and Walt for coming out. Um, and I was told that, uh, I was supposed to, uh, look after the problem myself, which I did. Luckily, I was able to get total site services. They put in a pump. Uh, with the pump running, the water from my garage stopped immediately. Uh, so clearly, that was the problem. Um, the next issue was debris. I had to babysit this pump. Uh, watching it every four or five hours for the next two weeks, which was not, uh, a great experience. Um, okay, so let's look at the potential solutions to this problem. Um, the flooding needs to be addressed, and, uh, we need to put something in, uh, before next spring. So I don't have to go through this, uh, babysitting of the pump and, uh, potential, uh, running the potential future damages to either my property or my neighbors. Uh, the existing culvert, uh, needs to be replaced, and it needs to be upsized to match the diameter of the municipal culvert that, uh, um, Public Works put in, uh, uh, about ten years ago. So, um, I think the municipality must take responsibility for, uh, dealing with water that, uh, gets discharged on my property. Um, having, uh, the property owner, um, shoulder this is, uh, consider that unfair. And none of this water is coming from either my, my property or my neighbor. So this is other people's water that I understand needs to be drained, but, uh, it shouldn't be all my responsibility to, 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 to handle that. So, uh, I see sort of two approaches. You guys might, uh, uh, see some other, uh, ways of doing this. But, uh, I sort of see, let's, uh, uh, we could do a negotiated cost-sharing agreement and then have municipal forces install a new and properly sized culvert on my property. Or, um, that, or I can make a request, uh, that a municipal, formal municipal drain, uh, as defined under the Drainage Act, uh, be established and constructed by the municipality. Um, my opinion, the quickest solution, uh, and one that'll can be implemented for next, uh, by the end of this year. So it's in place for next spring, uh, would be the first approach. Um, just, um, why I think option one's the best is that option two is a very formal process. I don't know, uh, how many municipal drains, uh, under the Drainage Act have been established, but it's a very prescribed, uh, process delineated under the act. And, uh, you know, municipality opt to hire a consulting engineer. He has to, uh, prepare a drainage report. Uh, the drainage report will, like, identify the solutions. Well, we sort of know what the solution, but it also would establish what the drainage area is, who's generating the water, uh, and then come up with a pro-rata, uh, cost-sharing agreement. And the pro-rata cross-sharing agreement is all based on drainage area, whose drainage area is being, uh, drained, and the amount of water that each drainage area generates. Since none of this water is being drained from my property, uh, it would, my cost would be negligible, uh, under a, a, a municipal drain scenario. So.
Andy, I am cautioning you on the time. It's a ten-minute delegation.
All right, so basically, um, I think the most cost-effective for everybody is to, uh, uh, to go with, uh, you know, let's sit down and work together, uh, come up with a cost-sharing solution. I'm prepared to contribute something towards this, uh, and, uh, let's get this done. Uh, to that, I sort of recommend that council consider setting up a small working group. Uh, staff and, uh, members of council to work with me to come up with a solution and a cost-sharing arrangement. I think we can work something out that will be cost-effective to everybody and get this thing done by this year.
Okay, so thank you for your, um, presentation, and I'm actually gonna turn it over to Rob next before we take questions from councillors. Uh, just so council knows there is a resolution on the, um, on the floor, not moved or seconded, but that, that has been written that, that only states to receive. There is no direction for any action. Um, although, um, you know, Andy, you've stated to have some, that, that's up to us to decide whether, what we do for your, you've got those recommendations. So I do know that staff have been in touch with you, um, a lot and looked into the situation. Um, and there's, are no municipal drains in Dyser, and I don't think there are any across the county. Um, it's generally, it's, don't have that situation up here tall. So Rob, did you want to comment on any of this and, uh, your information to date?
Uh, yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, so yeah, I went through the, uh, the documentation that Mr. Velikis has provided, and the, the replacement of the culvert under Halliburton Lake Road, I don't know if it was, I don't believe it was in twenty-eleven or twenty-twelve. That's when I started. I don't recall that, but it was probably not long before that. So I think the, the, the area or the timing is probably pretty close. Um, it wouldn't surprise me if the culvert was upsized. That was standard practice as we go through and, you know, for increased flow events. So, I mean, I, we can't dispute that. It probably was increased. I imagine it was probably a fifteen-inch, um, prior to that, probably the same that was under the driveway. So from my standpoint, um, short of going down the route of municipal drain, um, it is a natural water course that is going through private property, which doesn't give me any authority to do any improvements anyways. So I would be looking to council for direction in this matter. Um, the water going through Mr. Velikis', uh, culvert is a combination of both collected water from our road going down to a ditch and a natural water course from a, uh, backlot on the other side of the road. So, um, there is some of our water being collected, but it is also coming from private property as well and passing under our road.
Okay, thank you, Rob, for that. So basically, I'm gonna look to the rest of the council to see if there's anyone that wants to, um, give Rob direction to do anything further. I do know that he has looked into this, uh, you know, it's, I suppose, a question of really whether it's, you know, it's our responsibility. Uh, it is Mr. Velikis's property. So, um, I'll look to council to see if they want to do anything further than the recommendation, which is simply to receive. Councilor Clark?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, I think it would be appropriate, since the township caused some of these issues through upsizing of, of the, the culvert. Um, I think, and I, um, that we should take some responsibility, but work with, but work with, um, our, our delegation to, or kind of a shared solution. I think it would be appropriate. But, uh, again, we need Rob's, um, tie-in with this. But, um, what I'm, what I'm concerned about is, is the whole weather event stuff and the amount of rain that we got coming through. This is, this is kind of like a canary in the coal mine. Um, I think this is only the first we're gonna see this kind of issue. Um, there is, um, it, it can get very complex if we go the, the route of the act and, um, have to deal with that and probably become very lengthy. I think the most appropriate route is for the township to, um, to work with the property owner in this situation and see if we can come up with it and then come back to council with what it would cost to, uh, upsize that. Thank you.
Um, okay, is there any other comment from other councillors? Councilor Wood Roberts, and then Councilor Smith, second.
Um, I, I would just, uh, like to receive this today and then have a small working group to sort out any issues and bring a recommendation back to council.
Okay, Councilor Smith?
Uh, thank you. Um, yeah, I, I think I'm agreeing with, uh, Councilor Wood Roberts there. I've been surprised, uh, over the last three and a half years by the number of, uh, times that drainage issues have been, uh, raised with constituents contacting me. And, um, and, and, and so I've only learned a little bit, except that there are a lot of drainage issues across our municipality. And, and I think we need to be, uh, uh, fully informed, uh, in terms of precedent and so forth before we, uh, you know, reach any conclusions here. Uh, and, and this is not an issue that's limited to Dyser, even across the county. Uh, some of these things have been on county roads and so forth. Uh, some have gotten into, uh, uh, legal disputes, uh, with lawyers involved. And, uh, and so, uh, I think, uh, you know, uh, as I said, getting fully informed before we reach a conclusion would be appropriate. And, and the working group, uh, concept that, uh, Council Roberts, Wood Roberts would be, uh, sensible to me. And we need, need some follow-up action. We can't just receive this. Um, but, uh, I don't think it would be appropriate to make any commitment today without, uh, gain further insights. Thank you.
Absolutely, because really, we don't under, we need to have, uh, further information about our legal, um, and ethical responsibility. Um, and, uh, so I, with Council, Deputy Mayor Kennedy, were you, uh, wanting to weigh in?
Yeah, I just, um, I just listening to this this morning, it sounds like we were, we took responsibility in twenty thirteen when there was a hundred-year water event and fixed up Mr. Velikis's driveway. Now he is admitting that he has a rotten culvert that froze this time. And I'm not just quite sure why that's our responsibility. Well, the water's been flowing for the last ten years through that culvert. Without the hundred-year event, it's been fine. And, uh, um, I think it's the property owner's responsibility to probably to replace that culvert prior to, prior to this. If he's acknowledged, uh, seeing sand, which he has already stated, this is a sign of deterioration, that, uh, the municipality shouldn't be held liable for this.
Okay, so there seems to be a little bit of a support for a working group, and I think, um, that the working group should meet prior to, no offense to Mr. Velikis, but, but prior to, because Rob may have some knowledge that he wants to share with the, whatever councillors want to put up their hand. And then after that initial meeting, then to meet with you, Andy, and to, to go over what their findings were and to report back to council. Is that, uh, um, fair to say that that's what the majority of council is looking for? Okay, so, um, I don't mind, I did go up on site also and see that, so I don't mind being one person. I would suggest Councilor McKechnie, who's the ward councillor, myself and Rob meet to discuss and go through, um, this and then meet with you after. Is that okay? With everybody? Is that okay with Councilor McKechnie? Yep, okay, so, um, I don't know if we need to add to that. Do you want to just note in the minutes?
Yeah, I'll note it in the minutes. So who's gonna be on the group? And, yeah.
So, uh, Councilor McKechnie and Rob and myself will set a, a meeting time in the quite near future. We won't delay this. And then, uh, we'll set up a meeting with you, Mr. Velikis, okay?
Okay, thank you.
Great. Okay, so I do need a mover and a seconder to receive. Uh, Councilor Clark and second by Councilor Wood Roberts. You resolved that the committee, the whole acknowledges received the delegation from Halliburton Lake Road resident Andy Velikis regarding the flooding he is experiencing on his property. All in favor? Okay, great. And we'll likely meet by Zoom, even though we're gonna be slowly starting to meet back in person, as it's just more convenient for, uh, for some of us, if that's okay, Andy. Okay, thank you for joining us today.
Thank you very much for the opportunity.
Okay. So we're gonna move on. Oh, I closed my agenda to, um, reports. And so the first report is from our fire chief. Um, and the report is there. He, uh, is not here with us today. So the report's there. Any comments or questions can be taken back. If not, I'll just look for a mover to receive. The Councilor Smith and, uh, Councilor Wood Roberts. You resolved that the committee of the whole acknowledges receipt of the fire department report for April twenty twenty-two. All in favor? Carried. And next, we've got lots from Public Works, and Mr. Watson is on board with us today, and he has a ton of reports. So, uh, take it away, John.
All right, good morning, everyone. Um, the first report before you is for a draft bylaw to authorize the execution of a hazardous and special products service agreement, amending agreement with Product Care Association. Um, as committee is aware, um, back in June of twenty twenty-one, the Ontario Ministry of Environment, Conservation and Parks, uh, approved Ontario Regulation four-four-nine-twenty-one hazardous and special products, which came into effect on October first of twenty twenty-one. Uh, that led to, that regulation designates certain hazardous and special products, uh, for individual producer responsibility. The former program ended last year, and as such, municipalities throughout Ontario, including Dyser, are required to enter into new service agreements with individual producers or producer responsibility organizations or PROs. So this would be the third service agreement that we have under this piece of, uh, regulation. Um, in this case, it would be for, uh, designated paints and coatings, pesticides and solvents. And it would be an amending agreement with Product Care Association of Canada. Um, this amending agreement was presented, uh, being presented was developed in partnership with the regional municipality of Peel and the regional municipality of York's, uh, legal and waste management departments. It's embedded through those sources. Um, this agreement will come into effect on May twenty-fourth of twenty twenty-two, and our first hazardous waste days in July. So we've, we've still got good timing to get this agreement executed.
Excellent. Thanks for the explanation. Any questions to John? No, okay, moved in second. Oh, Councilor Smith, question?
Yeah, thank you. And, uh, John, thanks for the report. I just, uh, I had a kind of question of curiosity here. Um, you know, we're now gonna get paid about, uh, twelve hundred dollars per metric ton, uh, for these, uh, paint stains, pesticides, solids and so forth. Uh, what did we previously pay approximately? Uh, you know, with past hazardous waste days, we, I guess we didn't get paid for this stuff. We had to pay to get rid of it.
Um, so most of those materials were covered under the previous regulation, so we were receiving funding for it. And it was Product Care that was funding it previously. Um, so this is kind of a, a bit of an administrative change just because the, the regulation, uh, is, is new, but the, the materials designated are the same.
So the amount we're getting is similar or the same as it was before? Okay, great. Thank you very much.
Okay, a question from Councilor Clark.
Um, John, I, I saw the, uh, the list in the paper of all of the, the hazardous waste days and very good work and, and a nice explanation at the bottom as to what's, was accepted. Thank you. That's good. Uh, my question, though, is, is, um, anybody in the county who's got a, a landfill pass, can they attend any of those? Are you only allowed to ta, uh, attend the ones in your, in your own township?
Yeah, so new in twenty twenty-two, um, any resident in, uh, at County of Halliburton will be able to attend any of the fourteen household hazardous waste days. You would just need to bring your landfill identification user card, um, to either attend an event in Dyser, Algonquin Highlands, Highlands East or Minden Hills.
So this is a direct result from the Service Delivery Review, and I mentioned that at the county and maybe here too. But, um, you know, because these working groups are getting together and the different department heads are getting together, and this is an example of, of, you know, how, if, how simple was that? But it, it took, it, it, it's a great, um, example of the, uh, townships working together because we can only have so many events in our township. They cost money. But, um, you know, people But you know, people clean out their garages and basements and garden sheds at different times. So this is this is a great example of collaboration across the county. So thanks for that. Okay, now I'll take a mover and second if that's okay. Uh, Council Clark and Council Smith. Your result at the community, the whole recommends that the bylaw to authorize the execution of the hazardous and special products services amending agreement with Product Care Association of Canada be brought forward to May 24th, 2022 council meeting for approval. All in favor? Okay, that's carried. Next, John, the food cycler pilot project update two.
Yes, so a as committee is well aware, the food cycler pilot project is well underway. We've just completed our fourth week. And this report is summarizing some of the information up to the third week of the pilot project. And we have 100 participants in in the pilot project. Just some of the interesting kind of demographics of those participants. 67% are in households with adults only and 28% are in households with adults and children or youth. 97% are in detached homes with the the remaining two or three percent being in multi residential dwellings, not surprising for our community. 79% are permanent households and the other percentage is seasonal. And up to this point, most of the pilot participants had been managing their their food waste by putting it into the garbage. Within the pilot project, participants are doing weekly logs. And so in the first three weekly logs that we've got results for, we are finding the majority of of people were running the machine three times a week. And then the second was kind of two times a week. So people definitely are filling it up with their food waste and then composting the materials. The pilot started in early April. So during those first three weeks, the majority of people had not used the soil amendment created by the food cycler. But we just pay as the weather is getting warmer and people are back out in the gardens, we'll start to see people using it. And even this past week, some residents have sent me photos of of their food cycler compost being used in their gardens. And then there was just some feedback on the user guide that Dicard produced and also the food cycle science resident guide, where the average rating was 4.5 stars out of five. So people definitely found the the resources that we were providing to residents helpful. The second part of this report is around a second phase of the pilot project. So in the initial round, there was 144 Dicard registrants who were not selected to participate in the pilot project and they were notified by that by email. And so we are looking at ways that we could kind of expand the pilot program a second time. What we would be, what we're suggesting, what staff are suggesting is that we would do a second phase, but we'd only purchase a single skid, so 36 units of food cyclers. The delivery would take place in July 2022 to coincide with the ending of the first phase of the pilot. And also to piggyback on a delivery that Minden Hills would likely be receiving of their food cyclers for their pilot project. And because we'd be storing them in council chambers, there's less activity in council chambers in July. So it would be taking less, less ownership here in Town Hall. Participants would be selected from a lottery of the original 144 Dicard registrants. So we would not be seeking new applicants. It would just be based on the people who have currently would previously registered and did not get selected the first time. And they would participate in the 12 week pilot project, including completing completing three online surveys and 12 online weekly logs. And the fee would be $250 plus an administrative fee of $15.49 plus HST to bring the total cost of $300 per unit. And food cycle science has confirmed that they can honor that price of the $250 to purchase those units.
Okay, well, thank you for that report. And as I joked earlier, because I can sitting from my chair, I can see a few still remaining over there. And so so I looked at council to see. So they they do fill the room. 36 of those boxes is pretty good, but July is a quieter month. We don't do committee the whole in July. So so that would be okay. So what does the rest of council think about the timing, the cost, and extending it to the people that had already been part of the original lottery system and already registered? So I looked to council to, uh, Council Wood Roberts.
I would agree with that if it's going to, you know, help our environmental cause and it's it's cost neutral, I think it's well worth, well worth doing.
Okay, in in your report, just one sec, Council Smith, there's the one pie chart which shows what people are doing with the remnants that come out. And I was really surprised to see that 50% were doing it in the garbage, but you think that that's because of the weather. I looked at the booklets and it clearly states like you can't, you shouldn't put it directly into, you should be mixing it with some soils. But there's very good, in the literature that that it comes with, it says, you know, how to deal with that stuff. Now, what comes out from what would have been there, still, if you're putting in the garbage, it's it's extremely dry and extremely like a tenth of the size, I suppose. But anyway, so that I was still surprised that people were putting in the garbage and not just at least putting it in somewhere in their yard.
That that pie chart that you're referencing was how people dealt with food waste before they got the food cycler. So that's why it was going into the garbage. Yeah.
There, okay, sorry, sorry.
No, that's all right.
Didn't do that. Didn't read that right. Council Smith?
Uh, thank you. John, the the 36 that you're proposing to get here, is this a one time 36? Or do you see getting 36 more and kind of having a few waves, if you like?
I I would say 36 and and we're done for this year. It's it definitely is. Running a pilot project for 12 weeks takes, does take staff time, even if we're redoing it a second, second phase. Even just offering support to those participants. So I I would say do the 36 in round two and then leave it for the rest of the year. And let council decide in 2023 if they want to include something in the budget for for 2023 to do something different.
So would you expect that in 2023, the 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 price of $250 is still going to be available to us?
That I would not be aware to have to to talk with food cycle science to see if that would be an option available to us.
Well, I'm a merit of council, I guess. I really hate to see us limit this to just 36 when there's so many people that are very interested. We've got three reports coming right after this where we're spending money, tax dollars money to to handle garbage. And here's, you know, 144 people that have raised their hand and said, hey, I'm prepared to spend, you know, $250 or so to reduce the amount of garbage and I'm giving it a process. And 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 so for us not to facilitate that to the greatest extent possible, just seems like, you know, a terrible shame to me. And and so I would hope that we would, you know, the council chambers can't accommodate it. You know, find an alternate space. So I got a two car garage. I'll volunteer it if you want. But somehow failing to capitalize on the investment that we already made, $10,000 that we put up to get in this program. You know, not to to fully utilize the the ambitions and the money of our taxpayers. Uh, is just seems to me like the wrong answer. Thank you.
So we have lots of councils. Council Clark was first, Wood Roberts and then McKechnie. So to Council Clark.
Yeah, it's 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 good that we we got in this, you know, at least a test it out and see how it works. But this is not the only option for dealing with food waste in our homes. We've had digesters available at, you know, through the landfill for the last number of years. They're $80 for the digester. They work just fine. I've had one for years, never a problem with animals. I've got bears and everything else in the neighborhood. So I don't know what the white people are against that. But these, you know, you know, high tech food processors are not the only option for dealing with the food waste. So let's, you know, let's not go overboard on this. Let's also promote the more energy efficient, no electricity required digesters that are already built for 80 bucks on our on our landfills.
Good point, Council Clark. Thank you. And Council Wood Roberts?
I mean, I think it's good that we've had this pilot project and we're trying to accommodate as many people as we can. But there's also the availability to give them a direct link to purchase these independently. You know, we're not retailers per se. We don't want to be landlords, so I don't think we need to be retailers either. People that are wanting to do this, you know, and that's that's what they do. They buy them directly.
Okay, and Council McKechnie?
Yeah, I agree with Council Wood Roberts. Definitely, we've spent enough money on this, taxpayers' money. And I I'd be shocked at how much time John is spending on it also. I think it's time to move on and call the company up if you want one and buy one, just like you do everything else in our world today.
Okay, so the recommendation was though to purchase one skid, one and done with the date, so 36. John has factored that into his time. Are we going to support that at least? And I sorry, just to Council Deputy Mayor Kennedy has been waiting, so I'll go to him first and then back to Council Smith.
I I'm for the project. I just wanted a better way for us to handle it through the staff. Is turn this over to a service club or has been any inquiries made of a service club wanting to take this on? Even the initial 36 at $15, they can, that service club could raise $500 off this project and still benefit the community. So if we went larger, as Council Smith says, perhaps there's an opportunity to double that or whatever. I think we need to look into a little bit more. We've made the investment. We've seen the positive results. So let's see if there's some alternate solutions to moving it forward.
Okay, so the only, I do see some logistics with that problems in terms of we're all set up. We have the names, we have the data. We can't share people's personal information with the service club. We already have that information. We have Square to take the payments. John's recommendation is to do these 36 July 1st and be done. Council Smith's brought up, or Clark, pardon me, has brought up a really good point. We still offer digesters and composters. And digesters are probably even the easiest thing. There's no turning, there's no, there's, there's nothing and it's zero electricity. So it's not like we're not in this. We're trying to wait to get the results of the pilot project to show organic waste and garbage, you know, to be diverted from going to the landfill. John Watson is prepared to do the 36. That's his recommendation. We either say no to the 36. I don't think we have the capacity for staff to offer more or take it to a secondary source. The Council Smith, one last comment?
Thank you. Okay, if if a local retailer was able to sell this product $250, then I'd sure be enthusiastic about pursuing that. The the reality here is federal government, you know, didn't go and ask us that the federal government decided that this was a worthwhile product in the interest of our environment, in the interest of fighting climate change and all the other good things. And they offered a $250 subsidy. And and so that's only available when we participate in this type of program. The alternative to people who want this device is to go to Amazon and buy it for $500. And so, you know, the door is open here for us to enable 144 or frankly, more people who are prepared to make a significant investment in in a capital purchase of advice, reduce the amount of garbage that we spend, literally millions of dollars per year to handle. And and so tremendous, you know, on their part that they're willing to do that. The amount of electricity that this device consumes is so minimal. It's, you know, not a relevant fact in the argument. And, you know, although digesters and other technology have been available for a long time, people haven't adopted those for a variety of reasons. And and, you know, frankly, you know, to Council Clark, I've been doing composting for years here. I haven't had a bear come to my place, but lots of my neighbors say, no, it's a problem. They won't do it. But a device like this, they're prepared to use. And I know, you know, that close to 80% of the people who participated so far have been permanent residents. They're here year round. What a contribution it would make to reducing the economic and environmental impact of garbage on a variety of our stuff. And so, you know, I I'm I'm looking for a way to do this, not only for these 36, but frankly, for any resident of our community who wants to do it, if it means getting 200 of these devices and and selling them, we should be prepared to do that.
All right, so the staff recommendation is 36. I'll remind you again. I do not support going against the staff recommendation and adding additional. We do not have space to put these. They're huge. We do not have capacity of staff. We'd almost have to hire a somebody to manage the emails and the phone calls and the physical distribution of these boxes. So I'm going to look to see if there's a mover to, the recommendation was included in our resolution, I believe, at the top. It says recommendations. So that is the resolution. I would not support myself increasing this beyond the staff recommendation. Is there someone who wants to move the resolution as stands? Okay, so is that a moving Deputy Mayor Kennedy and a seconding Council Clark? So I'm going to read the resolution and we'll see if we have support. So sorry, that was Deputy Mayor Kennedy as a mover and Council Clark. Your result at the committee, the whole receives this report for information about the food cycler pilot project. And further that the committee, the whole recommends council direct staff to proceed with purchasing and reselling 36 food cyclers to the original 144 pilot project registrants at a cost of $250 plus $15.49 administrative fee plus HST. So before I look for a vote to John Watson, it would also then have to get done as a lottery. 144 people, 36 were selling. Okay, fair enough. All in favor? Okay, that passes. You know what? It's funny to not argue, but have some discussion over something that's too successful. Isn't that great? We all should be looking for ways, whether they're composters, digesters, tabletop, or just use less garbage. Like like Council Smith said, the next few items, the textile waste, waste composition study, like waste management is probably one of our biggest dilemmas and it's hitting us to wear in the face. Also, very exciting to hear Minden, because I have had Minden residents say, how can I get one of those? I said, talk to your council. So there you go. That's really good news. Very good. Okay, next up is the textile waste.
Yes, so over the month of April, I'm a student from Fleming College's Sustainable Waste Management Program was doing a remote placement with us. And part of the responsibilities was to research and report on textile waste diversion. And so the for the purposes of this initiative, textile waste can include fashion and textile industry waste. So when they're creating clothes and then also consumer waste. So when people are getting rid of textiles. And in Canada, the average person throws out 36.7 kilograms or 81 pounds of textiles annually. And in North America, it's about 10 million tons of clothing sent to landfill every year. And then with the advent of fast fashion, the average consumer purchased 60, 60% more clothing than in 2000, but kept each piece for half as long as they previously did. So clothing is, because it's fast fashion, it lasts a lot longer. And when we did our waste composition study in January, we did find that there was textiles actually appearing in our papers recycling, which is incorrect. Our containers recycling and it was also appearing in our garbage. We do not have a textile diversion program in Dicard, so it is considered garbage. And we do encourage rate pairs to drop off textiles at the Halbert Four Seas Lilian thrift store and the thrift warehouse operated by Search Community Services. And we definitely don't want to be seen to be in competition with either those two organizations with their efforts to to reduce waste and to reuse clothing. And so this would kind of be a complement to those programs. So staffer recommending issuing a request for proposals to secure a vendor that can provide textile waste collection bins that would meet appropriate safety standards that would be emptied on an on call or regular scheduled basis for some or all of our waste disposal sites, really just depending on our environmental compliance approvals for those sites. In addition, the vendor would be able to explain where that material is going. For example, is it being reused, repurposed? Is it going overseas for redistribution? And then also provide tonnage information to us, so we have a sense of how much textiles were diverting through the programs that we would be coordinating. There are a number of national textile diversion programs that provide these sorts of bins and pickups. And typically it's done at no cost to the municipality. So it's anticipated that this program would be cost neutral to the rate pair.
Yeah, this is a great go forward thing. I mean, we all have textile waste and there's And there's really, when you're wanting to donate clothing to something local or, or something beyond. It should be something that the zipper works and somebody would want to wear, you know, that twenty-year-old sweatshirt that's stained beyond. That's garbage, right, you don't want, and I know I have people that volunteer, friends of mine at, uh, Four Seas and believe me, some, uh, they, they. Have to sort, a lot of what they get is garbage, textile garbage, not that somebody would, it wouldn't sell, so they have to set that aside. So, um, I did see a hand, uh, councillor Clark, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, Chief Madam Mayor, um, just a, a, a quick question, uh, John. Um, when the Home Cottage Show was on in Halbert a couple of years back, there is, uh, a company on a Midland, um. Quantum passive or passive quantum or whatever that does high efficiency homes. Um, and what they were showing was textiles that had been processed into very high-density insulation. Um, so I'm just, just as a, maybe as a, a, a point to, in, in your, you know, exploration for a company that may take. You know, the garbage, which are textile materials, if you could find such a company like that, that would be, uh, you know, a, a great source for, uh. You know, user-friendly, um, uh, insulation, or, you know, and, and a good use of the, of the product.
Yeah, that's excellent information, thank you.
Um, any other questions to John on this, your support? So John, how complicated do you think this is, um, in terms of our certificate of approval at waste, at the waste, you know, the ministry, like. Putting a bin that we can collect textiles, is that gonna be a complicated?
Um, for some sites, it should be relatively straightforward, because there is a reuse kind of option that, that it would fit within that. Um, others are the ECAs, the environmental compliance approval is a bit, uh, vague on that topic, and so. Um, it's a discussion I would have with the, with our ministry representative, just to confirm that, uh, having this sort of bin. Which typically, I mean, you see them often in parking lots, like they're not big spaces, they get emptied pretty regularly. So that's the kind of, uh, bin I, I would be hoping to get, so not something taking up a lot of space. A frequent pickup and, and it, and an inert material essentially, nothing that's gonna be dangerous to have on site for a few weeks.
And keep the material dry, it's important, um, Mallory?
I just have a question for John while we're discussing it, if, if the ECA was a problem, is it a possible? And maybe this is a bigger discussion, is it a possibility to have at the municipal office, is what I was gonna say. But it, I guess it would depend on if it can fit in the parking lot and if we want that. I see them in different parking lots all over the place, so if the ministry was going to cause problems, for example, at Halbert landfill. We have other areas possibly that we could put them.
Yeah.
Okay, but we'll leave all that with John to determine, so I do need, I'll look for a mover in a second or that to prove this. Councillor Clark and seconded by councillor Wood Roberts. We resolved that the committee of the whole received this report about textile waste diversion for information, and further that the committee of the whole recommends. Council direct staff to issue a request for proposals to secure a vendor to provide a textile waste diversion program at some. Or all of DICEART's waste disposal sites, all in favor? Okay, carried. Keep going, John.
All right, I, so as, as, uh, committees aware, we do these waste composition studies that we budgeted for in, uh, twenty twenty-two. Our first one was completed in January, we'll be doing one in spring, summer and fall later this year, those have all been budgeted for. Um, as, as Ontario is transitioning to the new blue box regulation, DICEART transitions in twenty twenty-four. Uh, Stewardship Ontario and the Industry Research Funder Continuous Improvement Fund, or CIF. Are very eager to kind of support waste composition studies, uh, focusing on blue box materials and recycling appearing in the garbage. So we've been selected as one of six municipalities that have existing waste composition studies in place. That Stewardship Ontario and CIF have selected, um, to be part of a new funding support program. So for the four waste composition studies that we have scheduled in twenty twenty-two. Stewardship Ontario and CIF would now fund the blue box related portions of those composition studies. So the other types, they, they, they only care about blue box and blue box in the garbage. So other types of materials like food waste and yard waste, household hazards waste, that would remain the financial responsibility of DICEART. So the four audits had originally been budgeted at thirteen thousand nine hundred dollars plus HST. Um, and it's now estimated that Stewardship Ontario and CIF will cover approximately eight thousand dollars of each of those, uh, audits. So our, our costs in twenty twenty-two will be reduced because we are now part of this, uh, funding program, um, which is great news, uh, for, for us. Um, they are also, CIF and Stewardship Ontario are also really interested in continuing to do the waste audits into twenty twenty-three. Um, we'd only plan to do them in twenty twenty-two, but they would again fund the blue box portion in twenty twenty-three. And they actually would be the ones who would issue the RFP to find the vendor, so it's like, it lets work for us. Um, we would just, if we wanted to continue to, to audit the food waste, for example, in the garbage, we would pay for that additional portion in twenty twenty-three. Um, so it'd be about five thousand nine hundred per audit. Um, so there's no financial im- impact this year, uh, it's a cost savings to us this year. And in twenty twenty-three, we would budget approximately twenty-three thousand six hundred dollars to continue our portion of those waste audits. To understand what's appearing in our waste stream and really to see, um, if, if the, our, all of our efforts, whether it be household hazard waste, textiles. Food cycler, how are these things impacting our, our waste overall, um, as we go into twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty, twenty-four?
Yeah, well, this is great news, actually, and I think, you know, doing it for then two full years will maybe see. Is there a shift, is there a change, I mean, it's always gonna be hard to tell, uh, for certain, but we may certainly get some data from that. And what I would suggest is that the savings that we're achieving in this year because of that. That we maybe transfer that over so through Barbara, so that it doesn't find a future council as a, because, so we'll be underspent this year, but you. Utilize that funds for that, our portion into twenty twenty-three, if that's at all possible. I know it's a shell game, but, uh, nonetheless, it just, just a thought, uh, councillor Smith and then councillor Clark.
Uh, yeah, thanks, um, so Madam Mayor, I think that, uh, you know, the, the twenty-five thousand dollars is a, is a terrific opportunity and, um. And, and I'd asked the question of, of John, um, you know, uh, couldn't we redirect that money? Uh, to, uh, to supporting a food cycler, uh, you know, the mayor made an earlier suggestion that would take, uh, you know, potentially a student. Uh, summer job, uh, we could pay that student with the twenty-five thousand dollars that we're saving. And, uh, potentially get food cyclers in hundreds of homes in our community.
So then, the, as I said, the initial funding for the, um, food, the waste composition study came from the modernization fund. Um, and so it definitely is more around, uh, research and, and that kind of modernization activity. So I, I don't know if we'd be able to, to allocate it towards a student staffing or anything like that, Barbara would maybe have some more insight.
Well, I'm just, uh, as Chair, Mayor and Chair of the meeting, that resolution has been received and voted on and passed. So I don't think we're gonna go backwards, sorry councillor Smith, there's other initiatives that we can continue to do in our waste management hol- holistic approach. But it wasn't just about the money, it was the capacity, uh, also physical place of where to receive. We're not shippers and receivers, I think it was councillor Wood Roberts that said, you know, we're not in the retail business, we're trying to show people that they can make changes. In their habits and in what we, uh, take to our land transfer stations. And, and we can all be making those changes, so councillor Clark?
Into you, Madam Mayor, um, John, for, uh, twenty twenty-three, you're, you're going into an RFP type of process. Well, you still have a, ability to use the, uh, you know, the, the Waste Management Studies Program out of Fleming, um. Because I know they've been pretty instrumental in a lot of, of the overall studies and work you've been doing so far. Um, but, uh, what I'm, I guess, I guess my concern is, is we're talking about an RFP process that would bring in commercial companies as opposed to. Using, you know, this very unique program out of Fleming College that's dealing with helping communities deal with waste management. I just, I just don't want them kind of pushed out if there's an opportunity to, to be able to use that, use that resource going forward.
Uh, yeah, so for the waste composition studies that DICEART is doing this year, um, it's a, it is a, a private vendor who's, who's conducting those waste composition studies. Just with the level, there's an expertise required around the data management aspect, um, so Fleming College, uh, isn't involved with the waste composition studies. They definitely use the results in their research, um, and, but I suspect we'll continue having a really healthy relationship with, with Fleming College and new links on additional. Uh, waste management programs going forward.
Okay, um, and to my comment at the beginning, Barbara, is there a possibility to allocate funds, uh, that we will have. Received or saved this year to allocate those funds for the twenty twenty-three project?
Yeah, we can, uh, present that in the budget and if it's the will of council, uh. That can be considered as, uh, being funded through the municipal modernization.
Okay, because that's where we have, will have saved it from, so we don't need that in this resolution, it's just a thought for the, for the, how to fund for the twenty twenty-three year. So there is a resolution on the table, do we wanna look for mover seconder at this time, councillor Clark, seconded by councillor Smith? We resolved that the committee of the whole received this report about waste composition study additional funding for information. And that the committee of the whole recommend that council approve the continuation of waste composition studies in twenty twenty-three. Pending funding from Stewardship, Stewardship Ontario and Continuous Improvement Fund, all in favor? Okay, carried. One last thing, I think, from you, John?
One last one, I, so this is in regards to forty-yard roll-off bins. So in spring of this year, uh, four of our existing forty-yard roll-off bins that we used to haul waste materials became unexpectedly. Non-roadworthy or unsafe for transport, so, and they all went out of commission within a few weeks of each other, it was like. Yeah, it was, it was a whole thing, um, and really they became non-road, road-worthy because of increased usage. We're just hauling more material and because garbage, which we're hauling from three of our sites tends to be more wet than garbage. Which can lead to more rusting of the bins, for example. Um, two of the bins are completely unrepairable, and the other two could be repaired at a cost of approximately six thousand dollars each. Um, with repairs providing a couple of years, uh, extension. Um, the, a bin manufacturer called Fanitec Manufacturing Corporation, um, has offered to purchase the four bins from us. Uh, with a fifteen hundred dollar credit towards the purchase of new roll-off bins. Uh, and a new roll-off bin from Fanitec costs eleven thousand dollars, uh, plus HST. Because we lost four of our bins unexpectedly, uh, staffer recommending that we purchase two. And then we'll just continue to rent bins from Mid-Ontario disposal to kind of make up the difference. So the total with the HST and the credit would come to twenty-three thousand nine hundred and eighty-two dollars and ninety-four cents. Um, we do actually have a fair amount of scrap metal, like old culverts, unusable bins at our roads garage. And our scrap metal dealer, Gerd O-Metals, uh, estimates they, they would actually be paying us, uh, thirty thousand dollars. Uh, for the excess scrap metal that they would be processing from that site, so I benefited of, of an offset there. Um, as, as committee may remember, last year we issued a request for tenders to purchase additional roll-off bins. And then we've received two quotes, um, one vendor quoted eighteen thousand per bin. Um, and the second vendor, which was awarded to, the work actually reneged on the pricing and the tender fell through, so, um. At, at that time, because of the price of steel is fluctuating very dramatically, and we were uncertain about whether we would need bins. Um, because of the blue box transition, and we did not, we did not put any money in our budget for twenty twenty-one to make, to make a purchase. But that in twenty twenty-two, but then we lost four bins totally unexpectedly, so, uh, a- and at the start of our, uh, busy season. So again, staffer recommending that we purchase two bins, um, to, to make up for the four that we're losing.
Don't think there's a lot of wiggle room with the recommendation here, but anyway, go ahead councillor Clark.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not picking on you, John, I just usually have questions through on your stuff, I find it interesting. Um, the, uh, bins that you're, you're, uh, replacing, how old are they, any, any information that you may have as to how long we've had those in service?
Some of them, some of them are, uh, some of the original bins, so close to fifteen years. Um, we had in the asset management plan, I think, started to estimate a ten-year lifespan, but I think it's even much shorter than that, just the amount of hauling that we're doing. So I think we're gonna start like five, seven years type of thing, uh, just, we're hauling material. Quite a bit now, especially with the garbage being hauled out at three of the five sites.
Can I ask a dumb question, uh, which is, because they're open. And so if it rains, rain can get in there, is there drainage at the bottom of the, are they self-contained?
They're self-contained, yeah.
So they do feel, they're not, you know, because you, you hear some places where they actually like have a shelter over top to prevent rainfall, so I guess it wasn't a dumb question. I'm just, you know.
We, we do have some bins in our, in our inventory that do have lids, um, lids, lids have many benefits. Uh, rain, animals, uh, but then they also rust out, and then there's a whole getting, getting the lids fixed. Or getting staff to be able to lift the lids becomes a challenge, um, so. People have many opinions about lids.
Yes, well, anyway, there you go, water and steel rust. Uh, so mover seconder then, I'll look for councillor Clark and Deputy Mayor Kennedy. Uh, be resolved that the committee of the whole recommend council approve the purchase of two forty-yard roll-off bins from Fanotech Manufacturing Corporation. For twenty-three thousand nine hundred and eighty-two dollars and ninety-four cents plus HST, all in favor? Okay, carried. Okay, thanks for all that today, John.
Thank you.
Very good. Next section we'll move into is, uh, parks and recreation and events. And we'll bring in Andrea Mueller. Just waiting till Andrea comes in the meeting. Hi Andrea.
Good morning, hello.
Morning, okay, do your recreational program update?
Sure, so we're happy, we have some recreation programs happening again, um, it's been great, we, ball hockey started up last week. With approximately sixty youth registered, um, some of the, some of the age categories are full. I still have people asking if they can get in, but we are maxed out, we can't allow more people just given the time that we have. Um, there are parents looking to see if we could do an adult ball hockey league, I've had some inquiries, so that might be something we'll look at. And bring a report forward for next year to see if it's feasible to run an adult ball hockey league in DICEART, uh, through the municipality. Um, as you know, in twenty twenty, the Halliburton Soccer Club closed its doors and. That we've been trying to figure something out, we were fortunate to find Kathy Judson, who is, uh, coordinating the soccer. And we're running soccer through the municipality with Kathy as a coordinator, um, for youth and also a women's only league. Since I wrote the report, we've had actually more people register, so at the moment, there's a hundred and three children registered for youth soccer. And, uh, seventeen women registered, so we're almost at capacity with the women, um, and the youth, we have a bit more capacity. Uh, it's really great, Kathy was able to secure, um, Tim Hortons, the Timbits program as part of the, uh, soccer programming. So they, they help with, um, jerseys, socks, balls and everything for kids ages four to eight. So that's helping out with the, the younger youth, and then Tim Hortons, the owner of the Tim Hortons here. Has donated seven hundred and fifty dollars towards the women's, uh, soccer to help with referees and, and jerseys. So it's really, um, going forward, people are excited. The one thing we're hoping is that we can run the program at Glebe Park, at least for the youth program, because then everybody's in one spot. We have a storage shed there, which makes it really easy to put the equipment in at the end of the night. Um, if we are unable to use Glebe Park, then we have to look at the school fields, the problem there becomes storage, because there's only. It's gaining access to see if they'll allow us to use the storage by the track, but there's no storage up at the JDH Stewart Baker Fields. Um, we did look at the Fish Hat Tree, and the Fish Hat Tree was open to us using the fields, however, it's really wet. There, it seems to have sunk more in the one corner, so there'd be a lake for half the season. And, and I, I, in years past, it was always a bit wet in that corner towards later in the season, but it seems that that has expanded. There is a shed there, which we have access to, but, um, other than the shed, doesn't seem to make sense to run the programs at the Fish Hat Tree. So, um, Kate's bringing a report forward to the Glebe Park Committee, um, we're hoping to go, to be able to go there. So, um, some of the registration fees from the soccer program are going to be used to purchase some new equipment. We have the equipment from the Halliburton Soccer Club, some of it's in great shape and some of it needs to be replaced. It's been sitting around for two years and at the end of, in the, in the twenty nineteen season, there would have been some replacement going forward into twenty twenty, which. Obviously didn't happen, so that's where we sit with, uh, recreation programs at the moment, but we're just excited. that's where we sit with uh recreation programs at the moment, but we're just excited having people out there and doing some things.
Well, is it exciting and congratulations to this Kathy Judson. I don't know her. I think I saw her. She there was a article in the newspaper about her to uh be the coordinator and that's sort of what we need. Dyserd has facilities and we have some staff, but we can't be all things to all people. So by taking the the lead and working with us so we can do the registration, we have all that, we have that ability to to be able to do all that. Um, I I don't think, why would do we do we need Glebe Park Committee's approval to do a program on our own property?
I'm hoping we don't.
I don't think we do. I think we, I think it's a fabulous facility. It's not, it's just a a program. It's a big field there. Uh, one wonderful thing is there are no geese there, so you do not have to worry about that, which you would on some of the other properties uh that you that that have that are more near water. You know, we have parking, it's our facility, so I think it's, I think it's great to be in Glebe Park for the soccer. I don't think we have any council has any problem with that. No, and as for the 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 ball hockey, like, that's just incredible to see that. And and again, maybe there's an adult who would want to take the lead on that, as long as we only have a small window where we don't have ice.
Yes.
So um, but you know, if there's an adult that wants to take that on and we already, if it's during a time when we have staff available, just to open and close the building and washrooms and that sort of thing, but it would have to be again, as a somebody like a Kathy who's doing it with the soccer, to do that with the adult, an adult league for ball hockey for next year would be great.
And we were really lucky with Kathy because she started, she is um, she started, she's done, started three different soccer leagues and three different areas where she's lived. So she in Windsor, there's one that's been going for over twenty years. She's lived in France and in Germany and runs soccer leagues in those areas and all those programs are going strong and and going forward. So she and she has a lot of expertise and coaching background and everything in in soccer. So we're we're really fortunate.
Yeah, and to get a corporate sponsor like that is smart from the for the corporation and for the club as well. So any comments on the program update or questions? No, no concerns that it's in Glebe? I mean, I think we sort of let them know that it's there, but uh it's not changing anything. It's not any additional construction is just using the facility that's already there. Um, we, there will be some, hopefully some construction taking place for the ski club garage. But I would believe that that would be later in the fall and this program would be finished by then.
Yeah, this program runs for ten weeks, so we'll be done at the end of August.
So good. So mover and a secondary to receive the update. Uh, Counselor Wood Roberts and Counselor McKechnie. Your result that the committee, the whole receives the recreation program update uh report as information. All in favor? Yeah, it's carried. Um, and next, the tennis court resurfacing.
More good news. Yeah. So finally, after lots of searching and lots of um contacting different people, somebody came forward and said, they came and took a look and they're like, yes, we can resurface the tennis courts for you. So this is all part of the I C I F grant for Rotary Beach. Um, the work won't be able to be done until July, but hey, we'll take it. Uh, they're coming to do it. So they're going to resurface the courts. They're going to repair the cracks. Um, the fencing, if you go to the tennis courts, you'll see on the one side the fencing is leaning in, so they're going to fix that, um, reset the posts and make it uh straight up and down again, and so it's solid. Um, and then there's with the um the posts that that attach the nets, those are also wonky, so they're going to reset those and fix those. I've actually put in a request to see if we can get new posts, because the ones that are there don't support the type of nets that are being created anymore. Uh, so it wouldn't, it would all fall within the scope of the grant work anyways. Um, they'll recolor to match the colors that we currently have. Um, the one thing they did point out is that even if when the fence is fixed, not to hang a net from it. The net is just, it's too big of a space with the wind, the force of wind coming off the lake. It's not a good situation. So they recommended not even to put the the netting up, um, or this, I shouldn't say netting. Um, because because it will just create the similar issue once again, given how wet it is in the area and just just everything that's there. So we're excited. The uh tennis nets actually just went up, I think, yesterday. Um, they, we had planned to have them up sooner, but then the weather wasn't cooperating. Um, so there were a bunch of tennis players there yesterday. There's a shed now, which their equipment is stored in. Um, so they have access to the shed. It's labeled, I also asked, um, I was down there yesterday and I had a discussion with them. We've had some more vandalism in the park and everything. So we've been trying to promote that. If people see something happening, to call the non-emergency uh OPP number and to report it like, because quite often it's vandalism. It's not where it's hurting or harming somebody else in the moment. So uh, we've wrote that number down for them. So if they're seeing an issue, if they see a vehicle driving in the park, that's not a park vehicle, they can call and report it, because the more we get other people involved, the better we can keep our park.
Yeah, that's that's a shame. You told me that there was a vehicles driving and you told me where and I said, how did they get there? But I guess there's yeah, driving on the grass doesn't help. So that's the really great news. We do know that this is a Band-Aid fix. Right? And so it's great that we're um able to get the tennis courts resurfaced, but we do know that this is a short term uh thing. So you know, as uh this term of council finishes and and a new term will come in in the fall. Um, you know, really, I think, looking at uh future recreation facility for tennis pickleball. Do you want the same courts or do you have courts for tennis and courts for pickleball? Where are they going to go? What property? And really assessing that in the next, in in the very first year of that term of council will be a priority. Um, for the next, for the future councils. But for now, this is a good fix until we determine where those future courts should go. Counselor Smith? Counselor Smith, did you want to go? Question?
Uh, just uh to Andrea, it's uh, you know, it's terrific that you're able to get the tennis courts resurfaced now. Um, and maybe goes those same, but sometimes that's necessary anyway. Oh, you'll be, you're communicating with the tennis group about the dates in July, because I know they have some tournaments and uh uh, you're going to have to sort of work with each other on uh uh getting a schedule that doesn't interfere with those.
Yeah, I've already spoke to them. I I don't have a set date yet from the court resurfacers. I let the, I told them that as soon as I know the date, I'll I'll communicate it with them. Um, they're fully aware and and the players that were there yesterday, there were some pickleball players and some tennis ball players or tennis players. So they they're aware that it's coming and I asked them to share that with their groups and let them know.
Okay, thank you. And do we ever get the sign made that showed these were the dates for pickleball? These are the times and
It's in production. I I think it looks, it looks really cool. Um, it's, well, we're we're happy with the way it's going to look when it's up there. So it's uh, there it's in production. We have a another sign for Wes Guilford that's in production for the grant. Um, that has to go up after June second. Um, and we have a few nine-one, like, non-emergency call, but call such and such a number if they see something in the park.
Excellent, okay. All right, mover, secondary, please. Uh, Counselor Clark and seconded by Counselor Smith. Your result that the committee, the whole receives the tennis court resurfacing report as information. All in favor? Carried. And lastly, events.
Yeah, so there's, the requests are rolling in. I just had some more this morning. Um, so we've been receiving requests for mostly for events that have taken place in the park previously. Uh, the farmer's market is set to start on May seventeenth, which is, you know, we um uh, the week before Victoria Day weekend. Um, there's also rotary music in the park starting up in June. Um, we have the boat races. There's one, one that came forward, um, which is similar to a music in the park and in the sense that it's using the bandshell and there's music and people bring their own chairs. Um, this, the and I forgive me if I'm going to say this wrong, but the Bahai Community of Halliburton, um, they requested to use the bandshell on Sunday, July third to host a fundraiser concert for the refugees in Ukraine. And they're asking the Halliburton District Lions Club to collect the donations and help with the insurance coverage. And it's my understanding that the Lions Club has been raising some funds for Ukrainian refugees. So this would just be a part of that. And then Gord, Kid and Friends would perform at the bandshell. Uh, they would donate their time and their services for this concert or for the musical entertainment. So so that was a request that came forward. Um, this morning, the BIA mentioned, well, I heard it mentioned the other day, but it was confirmed this morning that the BIA is going forward with Midnight Madness. And they're putting a new twist or a new spin on it, so we'll see what that turns out to be. But I have to send off the park, the uh road closure agreement for them for that. So that's always the Friday before the civic holiday weekend. And um that's where we're at. We've had a also some things like Relay for Life. They're looking at starting up again with a small event and then eventually growing it. So so things that took place years ago are now slowly starting to to come back to fruition.
Well, that's exciting and I know uh my husband's involved with rotary music in the park and there's an awful lot of people that are excited to see that come again, because it it really is, you know, you don't have to buy a ticket to it and they've got a fabulous lineup of um of music that's accessible to all. So it's a great location for that. So that's good. Uh, and then the only one is that that new one, so that'll be interesting too. The for a fundraiser. So any questions, comments on events taking place? Nope, thumbs up. It's just, yes, let's it's been, it's been a while.
It has.
Uh, so mover, secondary, please. Uh, Counselor Clark and uh Counselor Wood Roberts. Your result that the committee, the whole receives this report regarding upcoming event bookings as information. All in favor? Great. Andrea, are you finding it any, uh, that was carried, sorry. Are you finding it a little bit easier now that everything's online and people can get the information and fill it out and uh, is that whole, that whole, is that streamlining things?
It does streamline things, especially when it comes to program registration, the park use. Um, the people that have done it before, it's, they know what to do. It's easy for them. The one thing I I ask them is that they don't populate, if it's a recurring event, they don't populate the future dates. It's easier for me to do that at my end, because otherwise they get an error message because the program, the system thinks that they're trying to book for you know, weeks on end. So so but it's it's it is streamlined for sure. It's helpful. It when somebody's first time around, they maybe need a bit of handholding and walking through the park use agreement, but once they're familiar with it, I think I haven't heard any negative comments about it from people that have had to use it once they're familiar with the system, so.
That's great, great. Okay, so uh, thanks for that. Just looking to the time, I think we can still get through building and bylaw. Uh, Kit Mallory?
Um, there was an added item for the Wes Guilford.
Oh, of course, I've got it right in front of me. Item D, excuse moi. Uh, Wes Guilford and Canada Day, Counselor Smith.
Great, uh, thank you. So uh, last night, we had a uh, a meeting uh at the Wes Guilford Recreation Center with respect uh to uh a a variety of topics, uh, including Canada Day and a meeting that would have normally ended wrapped up before eight o'clock, uh, went to well, well after nine. As uh, we're trying to sort through, uh, you know, what the uh opportunities are, I feel like, and uh I'm going to make a recommendation, but maybe first by way of uh of background. Uh, Wes Guilford has had a Canada Day celebration for uh for a long, long time. Nobody knows exactly how many years, but it's been a longstanding tradition and and it is the only uh, major Canada Day celebration that takes place in Dicart. Uh, I think one year there was a an acceptable event elsewhere in Dicart, but normally it's Wes Guilford and it's been something that's been uh long organized by volunteers in Wes Guilford and people come from all over to uh, who enjoy a day-long event uh that uh um, finishes off with a great fireworks display. Um, most of those events operate at kind of a break-even basis, uh, but the fireworks has always been a uh you know, a net expenditure of uh of several thousand dollars. And uh, each year, the uh, the group has organized a snow shuffle, uh, essentially a snowmobile day in February that has raised most of the money uh for the fireworks and um and the community's been very supportive of the snow shuffle, uh generous by, I say supportive, they've been generous in uh in supporting that because they know it's going to come back to them in just a few months with uh with an upcoming Canada Day event. Well, for the last two years, there's been no snow shuffle. That's, there's been no Canada Day event either. So uh um, you know, but now we're looking at uh, well, can we have a Canada Day event uh in two thousand and twenty-two? And um, you know, uh, certainly many would like to have an event, but some are nervous about it. Um, because of the uh ongoing uh challenges with COVID. Uh, there's even some reservations. Well, gee, what if we uh get all set to do a great day and uh, and then, you know, there's another increase in the outbreak and restrictions in the forests and so forth. So there's you know, there's tension both ways. But it would seem uh to me that uh, you know, we we ought to be able to have an event. Certainly, it's hard to imagine that we wouldn't be able to do fireworks, um, you know, given the nature of that. Um, but um, we're challenged from a funding point of view uh at this point. And uh, we're worried about the number of volunteers, as we saw in Harcourt, uh, with the, you know, the group there at the community center had had all resigned. There's no longer a board there. Uh, we've got a small group at Wes Guilford that's very committed, but it takes more than uh, half a dozen people to pull together a great candidate day. And um, uh, overnight, uh, one of the volunteers has drafted a social media posting uh, that uh, I could go up later today, uh, seeking uh both volunteers, um, you know, and some financial support uh, from the community uh for the for the fireworks. I don't know how that'll go, uh, but um, you know, one should be optimistic at this point, I guess. Um, but it still leaves us with a uh, a challenge with the lack of snow shuffle, the frankly, the lack of uh, of ongoing events at the community center for the last couple of years. It means we haven't had the income stream that we would normally have had. We've got the other demands with uh, you know, the need for new flooring that we've set money aside for. Uh, we're doing some work from a painting uh, perspective to clean the facility up. Uh, uh, there's work being done uh, uh, with trim and so and um, and again, I come back to uh Dicart and Canada Day. Um, and um, you know, uh, I would hope that uh, you know, in years to come uh, that council might get behind a single event in Dicart and say, this is where Dicart celebrates Canada Day and it's in Wes Guilford. Um, but that's a longer-term uh commitment, uh, you know, that could start uh in uh two thousand and twenty-three and uh, a new council could decide to get behind that and uh, and make it uh, you know, an even bigger event. Uh, but for two thousand and twenty-two, um, I'd like to recommend uh that uh Dicart Council uh make a contribution of twenty-five hundred dollars uh towards uh the candidate event, in particular, the fireworks uh in Wes Guilford. Um, with a view that we want to get this restarted uh after the pandemic. Uh, we want to support the uh, the community group and volunteers who uh, uh, will be committed to making this thing happen. And um, and then we uh, we take a a bigger view uh going forward and uh consider you know, the longer term, uh, because those that have been working on the snow shuffle for many years don't believe it will ever be able to return, or certainly not in the foreseeable future, return to the glory that it once had, uh, because of the of the nervousness that people still feel. Um, you know, related to the pandemic. Uh, but the twenty-five hundred with some of the funds we've already got and donations we believe we can get elsewhere, I think would position us to uh, to do a great fireworks display and presuming everything else comes together. Um, you know, we could uh, uh, have a uh, a very successful Canada Day in two thousand and twenty-two. Um, the other thing that uh I'd ask with uh, with Andrea Mueller still here, if there's any uh, support or assistance that uh, you know, uh, our recreation staff could provide in support of uh of helping organize and even, you know, participating. Uh, it takes a lot of people on July first to uh, um, you know, run kids' games and uh do all sorts of things. Some of those would be things that, you know, Andrea would have some experience and uh, and knowledge in. So um, simple as that. Happy to respond to any questions.
Okay, and and back to, it was a Dicert's one hundred and fiftieth, Canada's one hundred and fiftieth, and there was a, we did a um we we actually asked Wes Guilford, would they be okay if we did the fireworks in town? And it was I know Counselor McKechnie, you were there. I would say like eight or nine hundred people at the bandshell in the park. It was a fabulous event and the fireworks were viewed by so many and um, no collection. We had we we financed that completely ourselves. So um, I think I'll turn to Deputy Mayor Kennedy to see if there's support for that twenty-five hundred dollar contribution.
Yeah, I'll actually go into a bit more background too. Um, the decision or whatever was made years ago that Wes Guilford was going to be the de facto uh fireworks display for Dicart. So that's, that That is historical, it's always been that way, as long as I can remember. Uh, the five hundred dollar contribution those days was probably sufficient, but it hasn't come up with the way things have changed. I understand that the cost of fireworks that used to be five thousand dollars are now roughly seven thousand or more for this year. To put on any kind of, uh, uh, show, they have about, uh, West Government, understanding has about five thousand dollars in reserve, for lack of a better word. Um, so my thought this morning was, uh, that we would, uh, uh, assume the responsibility of, of helping to fund this. And for this first year, I would promote fifty percent funding up to a maximum of thirty-five hundred dollars. If they've come up with costs around seven thousand to do this project. They should be applauded for that, and, um, uh, I think it's. Two years I haven't been able to do anything, do any fundraising, um, I'd like to see us take this on and, and fully support it and. Perhaps the, uh, the fifty percent funding with a limit of thirty-five hundred might be appropriate. So I would, I would sort of bump up, uh, councillors. I don't know, we're in a bidding war here or what, but, uh, I just, I accept the responsibility that we have as Dyser and, and our, and our community to, to do this.
Okay, uh, although the request for, for twenty-five hundred, but, and we still didn't actually set aside any funds for that, so Barbara's gonna say, where is this gonna come from? Um, I do know that Dyser contributed or paid for, I believe, that the, the pyrotechnic board and the equipment. Because it went from, uh, you know, guy standing on a, on a. Raft out there with a lighter to pressing buttons and we all know the. Mister Walker out there in West Guilford, uh, he's got his license and, uh, knows how to do all that and, so it's a lot more complicated than it used to be, I remember we. When we, anyway, it doesn't matter, we did contribute, we have contributed over the years, but, uh. We'll see if there's support for the twenty-five hundred or additional support councillor Clark. And then to Barbara after.
Okay, yeah, I'm, a word, a word of caution, I'm getting a lot of pushback on people not wanting fireworks at all. Um, it, it's, it's disaster for our lakes, it's not great for animals, seniors, all kinds. Um, now I can see that, you know, we, we, you know, you just don't change things overnight and there is need for some, you know, some kind of firework displays, that kind of thing, but just. Rather than scaling things up, we are, you know, you kind of keep it level or you somehow come up with a way that is less. Um, you know, less of an impact on, on the community and, and it's a significant size of our community that is. Really concerned about fireworks and, you know, and not to take away the fun and the excitement of it, but there are, there are some real concerns. Um, so just to kind of keep that in mind before we talk about scaling things up, you know, let's kind of. Keep, you know, you know, recognize everybody in the community and not, not just a few who wanna see a massive fire display.
Well, we do, that's why in a way we, we did the firework bylaw, so that we limit the number of days, it's, you know, it's, it's. The July first weekend and we had to define what weekend was, but anyway, so it is, uh, in a way, you know, people still love fireworks, it's something to celebrate. Uh, it is Canada Day and so at least you know, okay, on this, but it's not July seventh and eighth and ninth and so on. I wanna hear from Barbara first and then councillor McKechnie, because Barbara might know where we could find twenty-five hundred dollars.
Yes, so, um, just looking at the twenty twenty-two budget, uh, we do have an events budget, uh. And there's roughly about five thousand dollars there, uh, typically we fund the Frost Festival event from that. Uh, money, however, uh, that did not take place this year, so, um. For council's consideration, there's roughly about five thousand dollars available there. Um, the only other event that might be drawn from that would be a New Year's eve, uh, levy event, but, uh. Definitely, uh, that's, uh, um. That would not take up the full five thousand, you might even be looking at about five hundred dollars if that event would go forward.
And I believe that we, who knows what's happening with Colorfest, but we did do something towards Colorfest in October as well. We're part of that, so, so we have funds, uh, councillor McKechnie?
Yeah, I, and I endorse what, uh, Pat said, this has been a tremendous, uh, event over the years, um. A lot of kids have run the, all the races and eaten a lot of good hamburgs and probably even had the odd beer and thrown some horseshoes. It's, it's a great event, COVID's put a damper on it, let's try to rejuvenate it and, uh, thirty-five hundred helps, uh. For this ti- one time, uh, to get it started again, let's, let's do it right so they can, can really enjoy the day like they used to.
Okay, so I'm gonna go back to councillor Smith because his recommendation was twenty-five hundred, but then I think what Deputy Mayor Kennedy said was. Fifty percent up to or something, I mean, it does depend, they might fundraise a fair bit, so I don't know that we need to commit thirty-five hundred. Uh, councillor Smith, do you have a thought?
Well, um, you know, I'm always, uh, frugal with, uh, tax dollars and maybe sometimes that's inappropriately so. Um, you know, uh, part of the concern, uh, of the group, as I mentioned, that although we've got some money, uh, there. Uh, the risk going forward, um, you know, this is not just about twenty twenty-two. Uh, they're thinking ahead to twenty twenty-three and so forth, so, um. Um, you know, if, if Dyzart, uh, provides more than twenty-five hundred. Uh, then, uh, that'll mean there's some money left for twenty twenty-three and, and, you know, beyond. Um, and to your point, uh, I know, and there's a, there's some local businesses that have supported the, uh, event in the past, they haven't been asked yet. Uh, but, uh, I'm very sure that, um, you know, that they will step forward again and say, you know, here's a check. Be five hundred dollars or whatever. Um, and, um, you know, and, and so the group will still be reaching out, uh, to those, uh, businesses and, uh, and so forth. I think, you know, to have the assurance that, uh, council is there for up to thirty-five hundred. That's, uh, you know, a, a very positive endorsement and demonstrates that, uh. Uh, the council is committed and, uh, it would give the group confidence that, you know, twenty twenty-two not, need not be the final event, if we can pull this off. Uh, that there's, uh, a commitment there that, hey, we're gonna have it, uh, in twenty twenty-three and beyond.
Okay, that's great, so, um, Mallory, you maybe have crafted a resolution and then just, uh, for future, like in sort of the. Hmm, October, uh, board meetings or of the West Guilford group, you know, maybe start planning your budget, that, that would be a great time to get. A request in for twenty twenty-three, um, so it's in the budget for sure, Mallory, do you have a resolution, uh, similar to what Deputy Mayor Kennedy had spoken about?
Yeah, so I have beat resolved that committee, the whole recommends that council make a contribution of thirty-five hundred. Towards the twenty twenty-two Canada Day event and firework display at the West Guilford Community Center.
Okay, before I look for mover and second, I think what Deputy Mayor Kennedy had said was fifty percent up to a maximum of thirty-five hundred.
Okay.
You know, if they're able to fundraise, it may help offset some of those costs, but they know they have a. You know, if it is seven thousand, they can't raise anything, they don't really get the thirty-five.
Or do we just say thirty-five hundred, which is what she read, because it looks like there's an awful lot of support for this event, it is our signature. Event held in West Guilford, just because it's not in the village of Halliburton, we could just take the resolution that Mallory stated, it's a lot easier than calculating. Fifty percent of the fundraise and to councillor Smith's point. If they're in a little bit of a surplus, so be it, it offsets twenty twenty-three.
Yeah, okay, oh, nobody in the community is profiting from this, uh, the, you know, the money we've got has been sitting there and, uh. And if there's a little bit extra leftover, um, you know, it'll, uh, either be there for twenty twenty-three or it'll help us get the floors done or. You know, as somebody said last night, that last gallon of paint cost sixty-four dollars, it's, uh, incredible.
I think it's a lot easier to just state thirty-five hundred. All right, um. Will, will we get, you said that they're ready to go with a social media post, will we get some, uh, promotion, some, uh, recognition that it's Dyser to sponsor? Yep.
Uh, you can be certain that, uh, Dyser and every other, uh, individual or, or, uh, business or whatever that contributes will be. Recognized for their generous support, yes.
Excellent, okay, so, uh, Andrea?
Can, is it possible that they can share the information with us, some years getting the information about the Canada Day celebrations in West Guilford has. Come out later, been challenging, I get, we get a lot of phone calls here at the office asking what's happening, so if we could get. When, I know right now it's just save the date, something's happening on Canada Day, but as. Events are established and everything, even if they can share that with me to share with our Welcome Center staff, it would be really helpful. Um, we can help promote it as well through, through our channels and our means and I can reach out to Tanya about. Maybe doing an act, a children's activity or something that day, so.
Oh, that's great, we've, I forgot to bring that part up, okay, uh, Tam, Tamara?
I, I was just gonna say, that's very gracious of Andrea to offer that, but I just wanna be careful. Because she's the only recreation staff we have and is along weekends, she may be planning stuff with her family as well, so. I know we've run into that with Family Day and other events where she's responsible, so I don't want to stretch her too thin.
Okay, fair enough. Um, so, Mallory read the resolution, it's pretty straightforward, I don't think she needs to read it again, I'll look for mover and a second or. Councillor Smith and seconded by Deputy Mayor Kennedy. So we heard the resolution, all in favor? Hey, super, that carries, um, so at this, I think we should take a fifteen-minute recess. And, uh, sorry to building and bylaw, but, uh, have to wait a little smidge longer, so it is, what time is it? Uh, ten forty, so we'll reconvene at, uh, five to eleven, so that's ten fifty-five, so we're now in recess. Okay, so we're back from our recess and, uh, the next thing, um, section that we'll go into is building and bylaws, we're gonna bring in. Our CBO Carl, our bylaw officer Robert, and we'll go through their reports. Good morning, gentlemen.
Morning.
Okay, so first up is the, uh, building permit activity report, so Carl?
Yeah, so it's, uh, uh, nothing too exciting, it's, uh, typical, uh, we didn't hit the blip that we hit last, uh. Last April, um, but, um, May is definitely shaping up to be a, a busy month.
Okay, so that's good news, any, uh, questions on the building permit report? Okay, so mover and second or to receive? Councillor Clark and, uh, councillor McKechnie? Your result that the committee, the whole receives the April twenty twenty-two building permit activity report as information, all in favor? Okay, carried. And next we will have the, uh, bylaw update. From Robert.
Hi, morning everyone, uh, straightforward report, if there's any questions or anything I can, uh, answer.
Okay, so questions for Robert? Councillor Smith, go ahead.
Uh, yeah, thanks, uh, uh, Robert, uh, two things, first off, uh, uh, for the month of April. Um, your report says the total number of complaints was zero, but it then gives details of five complaints and canine control. Or in property standards, I suspect there's a typo there, it's actually supposed to be five complaints in April.
Right, that was just a typo, I didn't, I, I don't know how I overlooked that one, but, uh, yeah, no, you're right.
No problem, um, and. Sorry, pressing the wrong key here, trying to boot my screen. The, uh, you've got some details here in terms of the, uh, timing of the complaints so that, uh, we can see. Uh, you know, the age of them, and I think this, uh, this layout here is, uh, is terrific, it's very instructional. In terms of, uh, you know, how long it takes to resolve some of these complaints. Um, the, uh, the ones that are over six months, I've noticed particularly in zoning, you've got eight of them there that are more than six months, uh, old. Would those all now be, uh, um, or, uh, being pursued, uh, with, uh, legal action or, um. Kind of what's, what's the status of a complaint that is that old and still outstanding?
So, one of them for sure is, we're waiting for legal opinion on one of the complaints. Um, I've contacted our lawyers a couple of times and still waiting for them to get me back a, uh, an, an opinion. On that case, uh, the other ones, a lot of them are coming, uh, due to their due dates. In the next, uh, week or so, or two weeks, uh, beginning of June for probably. I wanna say three or four of them, if not more, um, so they will be getting cleared up, hopefully relatively soon within the next. Uh, few weeks or so. And, um, yeah. So I, it, it, the progress is slow, but it's, uh, we're, we're moving forward and. And, uh, I know a couple of them have just come due and, uh. I'll be talking with Carl on one of them about possible, uh, legal action against them. As things have not been settled up as per a notice, uh, in, in order being issued, so.
And as part of your process, do you, uh, you alert these zone to the, to the risks from an economic point of view and? In, in legal costs, if we, if we end up going that route, that they not only could bear their own legal costs, they could end up bearing a, our two and, uh. It's pretty, can be a pretty significant, uh, uh, cost to someone who decides to, uh. To fight City Hall, if you like, over, uh, you know, long-established bylaws.
Yeah, so on our orders, uh, we, I do have a paragraph in there that states, like, if, if. Compliance is not gained or you fail to complete the order, possible legal action and fines. Are, are possible against you, so there are, there is that, um, um, I guess disclaimer, if you wanna call it, that. That says if you do not comply, we, there is a possibility of legal action being taken against you. With fines associated with that legal action.
Great, okay. I think that's so important, uh, because, uh. You know, I, I, I remember the, the individual who has their social media description, what's, is I live in Halliburton. Where there is no bylaw enforcement and, uh, I, I wanna see that changed. Um, because, uh, we need strong enforcement and, uh, get people to frankly obey the law, as simple as that.
And that said, thanks, uh, councillor Smith, then that said, sometimes people are doing things that they didn't even know weren't permitted, it's not blatant or obvious. And I think our choices, our, uh, first, uh. Attitude is to work with them, so as long as somebody is making progress in a zoning complaint, it, it isn't always. Um, sometimes it takes time to get to the compliance, but as long as they're moving forward, similar to, you know, someone needs. Late in their taxes, but is, is the difference between paying zero and not paying or trying to show an effort and make taxes and move in the right direction. So mover, second or to receive Robert's report? Uh, councillor Wood Roberts and councillor McKechnie? Your result that the committee, the whole accepts the April twenty twenty-two bylaw report as information, all in favor? Okay, carried. Okay, thanks, gentlemen. Next we'll jump into finance, which is all Barbara, starting with check summary.
Yes, good morning, so, uh, total disbursements for April is just over one million dollars and. Of that, seven hundred and sixty-five thousand is for accounts payable and the balance is for payroll.
Okay, any questions on checks? Mover, second or then if I can, councillor Clark, deputy mayor Kennedy? Your result that the committee, the whole acknowledges receipt of the April twenty twenty-two check summary, all in favor? Okay, carried. Next, there's some tax adjustments.
Yes, so we have some section three fifty-seven tax write-offs, total municipal portion is just over four hundred dollars. And they are due to, uh, building demolitions.
Okay, straightforward, so therefore mover and a second or. Councillor Clark and councillor Donaldson. Result that the committee, the whole authorizes the adjustment for applications made under section three fifty-seven municipal act two thousand and one as amended as follows and the totals are there. All in favor? Carried? Now, this will take a little more time with, let's do our report on investments and cash management.
Yes, so we have here the twenty twenty-one annual report on investments in cash management. And so based on Ontario Regulation four thirty-eight ninety-seven, requires municipality to adopt a statement of investment policies and goals to submit an investment report to council annually. And so the municipality does have investment policy number twelve. And basically that there ensures safety of invested funds, maintains liquidity, conforms to legislative constraints and maximize the rate on return. So the cash and investments that the municipality has is broken up between the cash balance and short term and long term investments. The last couple of years through COVID have been very dire in terms of return on investment. Interest rates have been at record lows during twenty twenty-one, the Bank of Canada maintained a target overnight rate of point two five of one percent. The municipality closed out the year with a cash balance of just over seven million dollars. That there generated fifty-two thousand one hundred and eighty-eight dollars in interest income. Averaged over the year, it's just point seven five of one percent. During twenty twenty-one, prime was sitting at two point four five percent. Short term investments, we had one GIC with our local board, just over six thousand dollars and that earned just point one six percent of one percent. So we can see here that the rates are not the best. Long term investments, we have just over one point two million dollars and it is with the one public sector funds and we have four hundred and twenty-eight thousand held in the bond portfolio and the balance is held in the high interest savings account. So as a total book value, we have just over eight point three million dollars, market value eight point two million. And the difference there is the bond portfolio fund. There is a current loss of about forty thousand dollars on that portfolio and typically during years of low interest rates, bond portfolios do not perform well.
Okay, so with this report, we can ask any questions we want. Are there any things that you're thinking of Barbara on a go forward basis? And I know that you and I talked earlier this morning about working on the, you're, you're well ahead, working into the policies for, you know, what I'm trying to say, our reserves, et cetera. What is it targets for working funds, for example, or, and, and so this sort of all ties together is maybe there is an opportunity to be investing a little bit more at this time. So did you want to comment on anything like that?
Yeah, so currently in the general operating account, there is a substantial amount of money sitting there and so something for future consideration of council is maybe to take a portion of that money and put it into a GIC as an example. It's low risk, where potentially we can gain a little bit more than what is being paid on the general operating count right now. Typically before COVID, we were actually getting a very good rate on our general operating bank balance account, but every facility, whether it's our, our current general operating bank, the one fund investment portfolio. As soon as COVID hit, everybody dropped their rates dramatically. So right now with money just sitting in the bank, it's not earning, excuse me, the best possible rate of return. So with the development of the reserve or the reserve and the reserve fund policy, perhaps there's a little bit of an opportunity here to revisit our cash balances and consider some different investment opportunities to increase that rate of return.
Okay, that's great. Yeah, that's what I, I was trying to say, but couldn't say very clearly. So any questions on this report or anything for future? So to Counselor Smith first.
Thanks very much. And thanks Barbara. You know, when I was looking at this report over the weekend, I, I, I recalled receiving it a long time ago and I thought what's happened since then? And so as you pointed out, the report hadn't been produced in the past couple of years. So the last time council saw this in, in twenty nineteen. And, and I think at that time we had, council had asked you to reduce the bond content. In fact, I think you were going to get rid of fifty percent immediately and fifty, twenty-five percent in a year and then the other twenty-five percent. And, you know, we still got some bond content and you know, that's unfortunate because bonds have done very poorly the last couple of years and, and even you know, this year in the calendar year twenty twenty-two, it's only four months old and, you know, virtually every bond fund is down somewhere between seven and ten percent in terms of their value. So holding bonds is not really good right now. And, you know, we've had this discussion in the past about why we hold so much in reserves, particularly the working fund reserve and even the development fund. My own view was that where we've taken too much in the way of tax dollars to put in our own accounts. And, and we see here that that's you know, pitifully low returns. And yet, at the end of the year, there was a million dollars that people had outstanding on taxes that they couldn't afford to pay us. And they were being charged at fifteen percent random interest rate associated with that outstanding tax balance. So somehow we've gotten things, you know, a lot of kilter here. But we are where we are and council decided to, you know, to raise taxes and keep those reserves up earlier this year. And, you know, that was a council decision, so be it. I do though, think that with so much money on hand, as you point out here, we've got a total of over eight million dollars that we have responsibility to taxpayers to that effectively and make sure we're earning the highest possible return. Keeping in mind that, you know, we don't want undue risk and, and so forth and, and more losses like we're experiencing on that bond fund. So I'd like to propose to council or to the committee to recommend to council that we actually issue an RFP and, and scout, you know, some financial expertise in terms of managing this so that we're, we're certain and can have confidence that we can say to taxpayers, we are getting the best possible return on that money, knowing that, you know, we can't go out and speculate on gold stocks and stuff like that. But, you know, GICs today, I mean, you can put your money in a one-year GIC today and get three point one percent from a major bank and they, and some of the alternative banks will give you a little more than that, even a, a, you know, I'll call it a daily bank account, but some of the alternative banks is paying over two percent on overnight cash. And if you want to go to a, you know, a three-year GIC, it can get close to four percent. So, you know, there are options and there are other options that, you know, that a financial expert could be bringing to our attention. And, you know, and then council could, you know, on a more timely basis. Again, we haven't had this information since twenty nineteen. And, and so to, to request, you know, a proposal from some financial people and say, what did you do for us? And that would be to me, the responsible thing to be able to say to taxpayers, we're, we're getting the best possible return of this money because we frankly, we can't be, not just the result of the last year here as shown in this report or are not great. Thank you.
I'd like Barbara to comment on that. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. So first of all, I'd like to say that Dizert's not alone in the experience that COVID has dealt us over the last two years. There's many other businesses and municipalities out there that feel the same or share the same experience. As far as engaging in a financial consultant or financial services, obviously, if you're engaging someone for consulting services, there is a fee. So there will be a cost to the municipality. Currently now we do have our current banking facility and they do have an account manager for Dizert and I do work with that individual and explore different opportunities. And so the other piece is we have the one investment funds. They have a very engaged group there as well that can provide the municipality with suggestions and different products that we may explore. And yes, I do agree that with the increase in interest rates just recently, GICs have become attractive. And that would be something that I recommend council look at to at least get a better rate of return. Whether it be over one year or two year, you can do a mixed, a hybrid. You can stage some funds in a one year, some in a two year to get a better rate of return on the money that we have available. And as far as the reserves go, I think the municipality should be proud that there are some very decent reserves. I just like to remind council that we do have an asset management plan and that there will require those funds at some point in time. And it is our responsibility to make sure that we have the proper resources. And that includes equipment to provide the municipal services to our residents.
Okay, thank you for that, Barbara. And I know that you said you're hoping to get that to the, perhaps in, in June to work on the reserve fund policies. And I think that'll, you know, maybe then we can discuss whether we want to go to some kind of other, further financial advisor than we already have. You know, it's this, the, the whole, everything has shifted, not just due to COVID, but due to all kinds of other world situations that are happening across, you know, with the war in Ukraine and the incredible meteor, I can't say it, the, the rising cost of, of fuel. And it's not, you know, incremental is, you know, overnight, another ten cents, overnight, another ten cents. So you know, we're, it's a shift, it's a change, and I don't think that we need to make any change right away, but I do think that there will be opportunities for that. And, you know, even, even something as simple as building up the reserve and borrowing from yourself, because borrowing is going to cost more. So we can offer our, we, we can be the bank of Dizert, which we have done for some situations like the Irish Line Pit where we borrowed, we paid and then we borrowed against ourselves and we can set the interest rate for that as well. So it's a, it's a whole thing. It's a balancing act of how much you borrow to how we, the next item on the agenda is our, is our debt and our, our debt schedule. And I think, you know, you have to look at it as a holistic approach, not just, oh, we have some funds we need to invest. Yeah, but we owe over here. So it is a really broad financial picture that we need to look at. Counselor McKechnie.
Yeah, I'd like to commend Barbara on another great report and I think we don't need any more lectures on getting another financial expert. We already have one. And Barbara's, I have all the confidence in the world in her and she's got best interests of all our, she's, she has our backs, all the taxpayers' backs. She has proven, she's a proven financial expert. And like I say, I don't need to listen to anybody's opinion about us having to go out and hire more financial experts. We have one already. Thank you.
Well, and thank you, Counselor McKechnie. Ultimately, it's all of our responsibility. If we give direction to Barbara to take five hundred thousand out of the working funds and put that in a GIC, that's up to us. We ask Barbara, Barbara, come back to us with a one-year, two-year, three-year GICs or such and such. We're going to ultimately make, we need to be a bit of, we're not experts, but we all have to be. I was going to use the word invested. Pay attention, follow the news, follow what's happening in the financial world, knowing that we are dealing with taxpayers' dollars and, and so like I say, we don't just because the next report is going to say we could be borrowing two and a half or paying off two and a half million dollars a year doesn't mean go and do that. And just because we have some money in reserve doesn't mean we lock all that money up from research. We need some of that. So it's a balance. It's, it truly is.
I, I agree with you a hundred percent and I'm sure Barbara is checking into everything that you just said and, and like I said, we are definitely not, none of us here besides Barbara is a financial expert.
Okay. And like I say, she'll have that report. Maybe we'll have that a further discussion on that in June. Counselor Smith?
Well, first off, I haven't suggested that Barbara is not a financial expert. But as council knows, she has a lot on her plate. And as council also knows, this is the first report that we've had the investment of the reserves since twenty nineteen, because Barbara has been busy doing other things. And, you know, and nobody can be an expert in everything and nobody can handle more than a full plate. And, you know, the results here speak for themselves. You know, and, and with all due respect to the local banks and their financial advisors and the account managers they assign, they all work for those institutions. And those financial institutions are extremely profitable, you know, because of the, of the work that those people do. And that's great. But we are looking after the money that belongs to our taxpayers. And, and as this report indicates and, you know, comparing it to what's out, out there, there's opportunities for us to do better in that respect. And, and so a, a wider call for, for proposals as to somebody who might do a better job for us. We may not select them. We may decide to have an RFP and look at the results and say there, there's nothing there, but not to investigate that alternative. From my point of view is we're not doing our job. You know, you mentioned that we're earning ourselves money. Well, four years ago, we didn't do that. When I first raised that, instead of leasing equipment and, you know, doing that ourselves, you know, the first time, no way, we won't do that. A while for council to come around to that. And, and now we're reaping the benefits. That's terrific. But I'm suggesting here, there's a next step. And as long as we're going to have these millions of dollars of our taxpayers' money in our bank account, to leave it there where we're earning such a pitifully low rate is just, you know, not doing our job. And, and it's as simple as that. And the longer that we fail to act on that means the longer the taxpayers are not getting full value for the money that they've given to us. I mean, we demanded it of them, but they've given it to us. And, and so from my point of view, we need to do a better job there. And the best way to do that is to get some expertise that has the time to review all of the alternatives consistent with our criteria and, and getting us into those alternatives on a timely basis. Because we're not doing that right now. Otherwise, we wouldn't have the results that are reflected in this report.
Okay, so like I say, we all know that the financial picture has changed. I can remember being on council years ago and, you know, there was a healthy line item in our, in our revenue stream, which was interest earned. You know, obviously that's changed. And I would suggest that we hold that thought, Counselor Smith, right now until Barbara comes back and we'll spend a lengthy time to go over all her suggestions and, including the reserves. Also to note that this would be, and I'm going to ask Barbara, this, this is from December thirty-first, twenty twenty-one, so this does not reflect the sale of the property that we just closed at the end of April, which was this, you know, over a million dollars. So we have that as cash right now. We know that. So I think we need to look at it and we need to look at it, as I said, with a holistic approach. So, you know, balance one against the other. And so we'll look forward to Barbara's report on, on reserves and reserve fund policies, keeping in mind also, you know, the investment side of it, the borrowing and the investment altogether. So for now, let's just receive this report.
Could I ask Barbara a question then?
Yes, certainly.
So Barbara, is my recollection correct that in, in twenty nineteen, when you brought forward this report in June of twenty nineteen, after some discussion, council asked that you sell off fifty percent of our bond fund. And then a year from then, sell off the other, sell off another twenty-five percent and then And then a year from then, sell off the other, sell off another twenty five percent. And then a year from that, sell off the final twenty five percent of the bond fund. Is recollection in that respect correct? And 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 if so, why do we still have, you know, roughly four hundred thousand dollars in the bond fund?
So the balance in the bond fund is the last twenty five percent of the sell-off that did not take place in twenty twenty one. So it's staff, staff's intention for that to happen in twenty twenty two, get all the money moved into the high interest savings account. And that will give us some opportunity then to revisit where we want to channel those funds into investment facilities that'll give us a better rate of return.
Okay, thank you.
Finally, to my point then in terms of staff having a full plate. They were, their plate was so full, they didn't get to execute on the direction that council provided. And, you know, if we had the type of of extra financial resource that we could secure.
Counselor Smith, you've made your point. I don't want to.
I've heard enough of it, okay?
Okay, yeah.
I don't need to be lectured by.
So as Chair, I'm gonna call for order. Which means nobody. Yeah, stop, nobody talk, thank you. And I think that it is time to move on from this subject. I think that we need to have mover and a seconder and I will look for that, please. Deputy Mayor Kennedy and Counselor Wood Roberts. Your results committee, the whole acknowledges receipt of the twenty twenty one annual report on investments and cash management as information. All in favor? Okay, thank you. That carries. Barbara, lastly, as I was already referencing, our debt and debt repayment schedule.
Yes, so we have here the twenty twenty one municipal debt limits and schedule of debt. And so Ontario Regulation four oh three oh two essentially governs the municipality's annual repayment limit. And that there is calculated through the FIR reporting with the Ministry of Municipal Affairs and Housing. So at the end of twenty twenty one, it was calculated that we had just over two point four million dollars in available debt repayment limit. Since the report was issued by the ministry, there's one small adjustment there where we had a a lease from one of our pieces of equipment in the Roads Department had come to the end of the lease, so that alleviated some of the debt repayment, added another twenty one thousand. So basically, the municipality can borrow up to two million four hundred and seventy eight thousand dollars. In, in actually, I restate that. The municipality can pay up to two million four hundred and seventy eight thousand dollars in debt repayment. Considering the a five percent interest rate and a term of ten years. The actual amount of debt the municipality could borrow is just over nineteen million dollars. So currently, as we sit at the end of twenty twenty one, this debt here, the municipality had just over two point seven million dollars of debt, which basically represents fourteen percent of that nineteen million dollars in total debt. So the actual debt repayment for the loans or the debentures only in twenty twenty two is just over five hundred and eighty four thousand dollars. And that represents twenty three point five percent of the repayment limit. Now, we also have to consider the lease payments under Ontario Regulation six fifty three oh five. And currently, at the end of December twenty twenty one, we had total debt of our lease payments of two hundred and five thousand dollars. And it's estimated of that, we'd be paying a hundred and fifty two thousand in twenty twenty two. So we're actually coming to the end of a few of our lease agreements here. And that money there, you know, in future budgets, perhaps council would consider to keep that as a placeholder to put towards the replacement value of the equipment. That was leased. And that concludes the report.
Okay, so thank you for this, Barbara. Now I did reference just earlier the our own payment back to ourselves for the Irish Line. And is that not need to be included because it's internal?
It's correct.
Okay, so it doesn't need to be reported because it's not to a third party lender.
Right.
Thus. So just wanted to point that out. The other thing to note is the, you know, I I look at the amortization period and when when is the lease or a loan coming due? It's in the very far right hand column is is showing that. And there, there's a bunch that show twenty twenty eight and that was because of the time of the construction of the office addition and parking lot. Previous loans that were still outstanding were all consolidated into one large loan. If that's correct, Barbara. And so therefore, that's why it's still showing some items that were that were outstanding that are like medical center and things like York Street that technically I felt should have been paid off by now, but they're showing on the books is those because it was rolled over into one large loan. Would that be correct?
Right, yeah. So the initial term on those loans when they first started was five years, but they were amortized over ten years. So after the first five years had expired, some of those projects were rolled in with new projects. So that's why you're still seeing some of the medical center and the streetscape projects on York Street and Highland Street. Now, those will come up for renewal in twenty twenty three. And that's the end of the five year term now. So you're gonna have another five years if if council decides to debenture until twenty twenty eight. And at that time, council can take a look and and, you know, decide if they want to debenture one hundred percent, they could maybe only debenture fifty percent of it if if the decision is made to draw funds from the reserve to alleviate because we look at what's happening in the economy right now and interest rates have increased substantially. And so that would have an impact on a renewal in twenty twenty three.
And that's why I said earlier too, it it has to be a holistic approach when you look at the the balance between borrowing and and putting money in reserves. Those were locked in at two point, what is it, two point seven something percent? Two point six, seven, six percent. Yeah, we know that in twenty, well, I can assume, I don't know anything, that it won't be that rate. So, you know, it is, it is, that's why when we wanna also put some money as Counselor Smith, you know, getting a a third party financial advisor, we'll call it, to to look at investing, we have to also be careful that we aren't locking in anything too far in any kind of investment because we might want to just invest in ourselves. We might want to look at the way these debts are coming up in twenty twenty three. So that's, that's that. And you never know, we could have in the future, municipal councils could have a very large project that they want to do. Not a new, you know what I mean, a something, a something that like our neighboring Midden Hills municipality did an extremely large loan and debenture for over forty years. So, you know, we we don't know. I think there's, there's certainly lots of things we we need in this municipality as well. Counselor Smith?
Yep, thank you. Just to respond to that. Frankly, if there's a a great project at some point in the future that, you know, we ought to put money into, that ought to be money that we collect at the time that we need it for that. What we've done now is we've collected money that we didn't need in the past and we've got it sitting in bank accounts, earning less than one percent a year. And that is unfair to our taxpayers. Because many of our taxpayers are funding their lifestyle through credit card debt, even through overdue taxes at fifteen percent per year. That's the problem with our current approach. And as I said, if we've got a great project in the future, we ought to be able to justify it in the future and go to the taxpayers and say, here's what it's gonna cost. We shouldn't fund it from a slush fund that we've created in the past by collecting unnecessarily tax dollars. That's what we've been doing. Thank you very much.
That's your personal opinion. I will look forward to the day when our auditors come and do their report. I don't know about you, I have some cash in the bank. I also, every, some people have some debt, some people have, you know what, Counselor Smith, we're gonna disagree on this wholeheartedly. There is nothing wrong with having cash. The fact that the cash that we have now is not doing as well as it could. And Barbara is gonna come back with some opportunities on how we can do that. And I just said earlier, we don't want to tie up that cash too much because we might want to be paying off so that we don't end up in these low debt or payments when they come up at amortization time. And to be renewed, they could be sitting at five percent. So it's, you know, everybody has different financial attitudes, obviously. Anybody else? Mover and a seconder, please. Counselor Clark and Counselor McKechnie. Your result of the committee, the whole acknowledges the receipt of the twenty twenty one municipal debt limits and schedule of debt report as information. All in favor? Thank you. I carried. Barbara, just on a go forward basis, I'm wondering if it's possible, I I think the AMO has information on that in terms of what our or maybe our ministry, what recommendations that we have for our reserves. I know our auditors will tell us that, but we also can look at what other municipalities have. I I think we did it at the County Deputy Mayor Kennedy and saw that the county council had, I think the third lowest reserves in across Ontario, or it was Eastern Ontario, it was a bit of embarrassment. So we, on one hand, somebody might have the opinion that we have too much in reserves. And I think in, if we want to look at any comparators, I actually think we're rather low. So I don't know if there are ministry guidelines, if there are benchmarks that we can see is, you know, are we doing the right thing, having municipal funds in, we'll call it cash?
There actually is a ministry report. I don't have it in front of me, but it does compare Daisert to other municipalities. And I can, I can get that information from that report there. I just don't have it available right now. But just off the top of my head, we're not at the top of the list.
No, and I didn't expect you to have that right now. I just thought, you know, for future, I know I've seen it. I know I've seen those reports and I know I've seen guidelines and I can't speak to it. Without having any information in front of me either, but there is data to support that what we're doing is healthy financial management for a municipality. And there will be opportunities to invest and make more than point zero one percent in a bank account. And still being extremely cautious and safe. So let's move on to our last section, which is the administration. And Tamara, is that okay if I let you speak to this one and I can chime in?
Certainly have the right to disconnect.
The the first one was the request for support for the dry stone sculpture. Okay, it's joining us, okay, pardon me. I didn't look at, yep.
I can certainly add to it though, but Kate's can speak to it primarily.
Sorry, you just said the right to disconnect. Okay, good morning, Kate.
Hello, so what I'm bringing forward today, it actually pertains to the Daisert Cultural Resources Committee. And it's, well, it's a request actually that usually comes to the Cultural Resources Committee, but it's going in a little bit of a different route this year. So Halliburton School of Art and Design is requesting support for a, for a new dry stone piece that would be created through their dry stone construction program that they offer every year. And historically, pre pandemic, the Cultural Resources Committee has supported these these sculptures that are or pieces that are created. There's been bridges, there's been benches, there've been walls. But the Cultural Resources Committee has provided support for those. And so the course is coming back this year after a couple of years on hiatus due to the pandemic. But also, Halliburton School of Art and Design has seen some changes in terms of staffing. There, there's been a retirement as well, so some change up. And so that means that timeline wise, the request hasn't come to the Cultural Resources Committee as it normally would. Cultural Resources Committee doesn't meet again until the end of June. So Mayor Roberts suggested that the request come to committee at the whole to obtain approval for the the project in theory, in broad strokes. And also to consider the financial aspect of the project as well. Because, as I said, the projects historically have been supported through a portion of the Cultural Resources Committee's budget. That has been a decision that the Cultural Resources Committee has made. But we don't know for certain if that's something that the committee would like to do because they don't meet again until June. So if the committee of the whole does support the project in in broad strokes, then there might be the need to provide some sort of contingency in terms of how there might be the possibility to help fund it if the Cultural Resources Committee is not interested in devoting a portion of its three thousand dollar budget to that. And I will say that Cultural Resources Committee, a lot of the projects that it's been working on have been have been slowed a bit over the last couple of years due to the pandemic and because not as many culture events and programs have been going on, but there is a lot going on with the Cultural Resources Committee at the moment. So already, we know that this year, there are plans for a cultural managers meeting to bring together the cultural community later this year. There are also, there may be costs involved with the ongoing mural project, the AJ Larue Arena. Also possibilities for for signage as well with regard to to Sam's Lake Park. So there, there are possible costs already. They are on the the list for this year. So it is not a given that the Cultural Resources Committee would be interested in committing funds to the project this year. And I should mention as well that the plan for this year is a new, the new piece would be in the vicinity of the new Halliburton Welcome Center. But we do recommend that guidance in terms of exact location and exact design, that that be deferred to the Cultural Resources Committee when it meets at its June meeting. So I think that's, I think that's the background. So I'll turn it over to you. And Mayor Roberts, if there's any other comments you'd like to provide, feel free.
Okay, I will. And also, Counselor Donaldson, who's Chair of the Cultural Resource Committee right now, you will recall, it it is just a matter of the timing of how things went. So we weren't able to get it onto our agenda. And then when we saw this item and the the new person in charge of this project sort of, you know, sent Tamara and myself an email, like, what's happening with this? We thought, well, we don't want to see this not go forward. They've got a great idea for this year. And if there's a secondary way that we can fund it. Because we can't, council can't make a decision on how cultural resource committee's budget is. They're its own entity. They make recommendations. So Counselor Donaldson, I think that what he, and I'd like to turn to her, I see you, Counselor Clark, but if it's okay, I want to go to Counselor Donaldson first. The last line in the recommendation too is that the location, design, as Kate just said, approval, et cetera, will be deferred to the Daisert Cultural Resource Committee at its June meetings. We'll make sure that that gets on the agenda. But it really is about the financial commitment. And I spoke to Barbara earlier and I asked, seeing this is gonna be in Headlake Park, perhaps there's a a reserve fund that we could take it out of the Headlake Park or pro funds. And also if though, in the event that the Cultural Resource Committee is underfunded by eight or hundred dollars, the remainder of that would go to that. Because we usually don't carry forward funds from committees year over year. So Counselor Donaldson, what do you think about the order of how this is coming forward?
Oh, I think that that that's a great idea. That that would, that would solve a problem because we don't have the meeting until after the fact.
Okay, so we'll commit the funds out of the regular Daisert funds for now and then, but take it. Okay, so we'll commit the funds out of the regular Dicer funds for now and then, but take it forward to. So, okay, Counselor Clark and then Deputy Mayor Kennedy.
I'm just going to say, what little amount's being added or asked for is just to cover the cost of the stone. I was involved in a project about ten years ago, building the one in front of the of the Halliburton School of Arts. And you work your buns off for a week breaking and building stone. But we were fortunate enough at that time that the the college kicked in the cost of of the of the truckload of stone that we needed to work with. That we didn't have to pay out of our pockets as students, our material costs. And that's actually what we're talking about right here. You know, the the students are going to be doing it for, for, you know, for the, as part of their program. But they're not going to have to want to take the stone back at the end of the thing because they paid for it. So, okay.
Okay, thanks. Deputy Mayor Kennedy?
Yeah, I think Counselor Clark answered my one question. My other one is the one I raised last time, is the clutter that's starting to happen around the Welcome Center. We've got the e-bike stands, we've got now a billboard with a hole in the middle of it, you can take your picture. Now we've got a stone, whatever it might be. I'd like to see council have some final, or at least Andrea Mueller have some input into where this thing's going, how big it is. Don't forget, we have Farmer's Market, Art School, the Art in the Park, for lack of a better word. And, you know, our historic vehicle, those, all those kinds of things use the park. And I'm just getting concerned that it seems every month somebody wants to plunk something close to Welcome Center. So just a word of caution on that.
No, that's a, that's a good point, and that's why I think the placement of anything is really important. Also, how does it fit into the Headlake Park master plan? You know, we've only, we we have this plan, and I think it needs to be referenced against that. Even though benches of this type of nature weren't in the plan, we don't want to install something that is never meant to be moved and say, oops, that's in the wrong spot because we're supposed to put a roadway through there or something, something else is supposed to go through there. So, so I'm wondering if, no, I can't remember the name of the person, our contact at the college, maybe we could ask her to be, to be a delegate at the June meeting to speak to the project, to the Cultural Resource Committee. And Cultural Resource Committee makes recommendations to council. And it's not, when when is the actual course? It's not till the end of the season, right?
The course runs from the nineteenth of September until the twenty-third, I believe, so.
Yep. So if it comes to the Cultural Resource Committee at the end of June, it would come, any kind of recommendation would come to the July council meeting. And we'd be in fine shape before the project would take place. Tamara, and then I saw Counselor Smith.
We just have to make sure we advise the college of whether it's a go-in principle, regardless of location, because they need to plan for their students and so forth and confirm everything.
We have that in today's resolution. Counselor Smith?
Thanks. I I think that the Deputy Mayor makes a terrific point about clutter and your point about the master plan there for Headlake Park. And I really wonder if we, if we might be better off encouraging the folks to find another location, you know, for this year until we get a little further along in that plan. Oh, interestingly enough, while Counselor Clark was working on on rocks years ago, I was involved in a similar course at the college that I made a product out of wood. And so there's a pavilion behind the hospital. And and it was built by a timber framing class at the college. And there are similar projects throughout our community. In fact, one of them at the town docks was another one of those timber framing classes. And they, you know, they can produce some great things for us. But we need to be careful how and managing that process so we end up with assets that are in the right place. And, you know, when you speak at Headlake Park, we've got a fountain there that experts are telling us that we're probably going to have to remove or do some major work on in the next few years because it's, you know, falling over, tilting to the side. And so I'd rather maybe have staff go back to the college and say, have you got a a Plan B location-wise until we get a little further along with our with our planning for Headlake Park before we lock into, you know, I think about rock, like, once it's in place.
Yep.
Part of there.
Okay, so actually, Mallory, it just said, Tamara, I'm looking at the resolution, and what about just stopping after the Halliburton School of Art and Design? And don't put in the area of anywhere? And take it back to the Cultural Resource Committee, knowing what the Headlake master plan, knowing what the comments, both I'll be at that meeting and so will Counselor Donaldson and Counselor Wood Roberts, hopefully. And Kate, so there'll be lots of us to remember this conversation, and the location is extremely important. There's lots of other areas in Headlake Park, it could be the library, we don't even know what it looks like, right? So.
Yeah, we could say on municipal property, but maybe that's a given. I mean.
Well, I think it is.
I don't know why we would.
I'm just going to take out in the area of the Welcome Center.
Okay.
Okay. Tamara, did you want to add anything before I look for the reader of the resolution?
I was just going to say, I I think they'll be fine with with whatever the location is, as long as it's a somewhat prominent spot where they can, where it can be seen. But it is meant to be a bench as well, I believe, so it's something that's functional as well as pretty.
Okay, great. So mover in a second, or please. Counselor Clark and Counselor Wood Roberts. You resolved that the committee, the whole supports the construction of a new dry stone sculpture by students from the Halliburton School of Art and Design. Should we reference it's going back to the Culture Resource Committee or to approve design? And no, okay, never mind. We've read the resolution, we know that's in the minutes. All in favor? Okay, carried. Okay, now it's up to you, Tamara. Disconnect.
Yeah, the right to disconnect. Basically, we have a requirement to implement a policy similar to this by June first. The province doesn't dictate what needs to be in the prop, in the policy, just that we need to have a policy. I don't think we're going to be affected too much at Dicer in terms of we have QP contracts and policies that deal with overtime and requirements to, that deal with any time that's outside of our regular work time. The one issue, the reason this has come up is because of everybody working from home during COVID on a provincial level or federal level, that they're finding there's more issues with trying to find that cutoff between work and home and when there's no car to get into to leave at the end of the day. One thing we will need to be aware of going forward, though, is that we still do have some staff that are putting in way, way more than their eight hours a day on a consistent, regular, year-round basis. And we need to really make sure that we address the staffing needs around those positions to make sure they're not for, because that's the intent of this policy, really, is to make sure people have have that life that we all talk about. So that's basically it for this policy. It's a, it's a requirement. All the municipalities are passing. We we looked at two different policies together, a longer version and a shorter version. We've chosen the shorter version and tailored it to match ourselves. But if there's any questions?
Take questions, Counselor Clark?
Yeah, just more of a comment. Tamara, quite a, quite a bit of the stuff we get is off in the evenings and weekends. And and, you know, you know, what I'll often do is an email to, you know, one of your department heads or whoever over that time. But the expectation is not that the staff are going to have to look at it in the weekend, maybe not until their regular work hours start again. But it's just to get it off your plate when you're dealing with the issue.
Yeah. No, and that's understood. I'll do the same thing. I'll send something as soon as I see it, so I don't forget. But I don't expect anyone's reading it on the other end.
Counselor Smith?
Thanks. Tamara, thanks. I I just wanted to say that my notes here, I I thought that the the policy was well-written and thoughtful. So thank you for that.
You're welcome.
Great, okay. And while they have the right to disconnect, we can encourage them to disconnect. Some people are finding, for whatever reason, people are more productive at, you know, between six AM and eight AM. And that's when they function or vice versa, six PM to eight PM. Tamara, we have had many texting conversations after hours. I mean, I guess that's par for the course, but, you know, and I appreciate that, all the staff and like what Counselor Clark said, just because if you do send an email or a message, you know, if it's not an emergency, then then, but it is that person's choice to respond or work. Some people like catching up on a weekend. So, but it is important to have this policy in place. So with that, I'll look for a mover, a second, or if I could. Sorry, Counselor McKechnie and Counselor Wood Roberts. You resolved that the committee, the whole recommended Dicer to all council that the disconnect from work policy be approved as presented. All in favor? Great, that's canceled, I've carried, that's canceled. Time to go into closed. We have just a couple items in closed session, so I'll read the resolution to go into closed. And I don't think we're going to need to take a lunch break today, so we'll just work through our closed session and manager. So I'll look for a mover in a second, or please, to go into closed session, Counselor Donaldson and Counselor Smith. You resolved that the committee, the whole adjourned its regular meeting at eleven fifty-four AM to discuss matters pursuant to Section two thirty-nine, Section two of the Municipal Act two thousand and one as amended pertaining to, number one, personal matters about an identifiable individual, including municipal or local board employees, and a proposed or pending acquisition or disposition of land in the geographic township of Dicer on Industrial Park Road. All in favor? Carried. Okay, so just give a sec while we go into, flip into closed. Thank you. Just turn your screen off if you don't mind. Okay, so we are back in open session. There are no reports coming out of our closed session today, so I'll just look to see if there's any notice of motion then filed today. So just an adjournment, please. I'll look for a mover in a second to adjourn today. So Counselor Donaldson and Deputy Mayor Kennedy. You resolved that the committee, the whole adjourned its meeting held on May tenth, two thousand and twenty-two at twelve thirty-eight PM. All in favor? Okay, so that's carried. We are adjourned and we are aiming to have an in-person council session two weeks from today on our Dicer Council Day. And we'll have staff zoom in and we'll be sitting in here. And if there's any thing further we need to adjust before then, we will, if we have to. But that is the the goal, to aim to have an in-person meeting. Still live-streamed on YouTube. Okay, thanks, everybody. Have a great day. Take care.